Good afternoon, everyone. It is 4:31 PM. We are at Cape Canaveral City Council Special Meeting at the City Hall Council Chambers at 100 Polk Avenue in Cape Canaveral, Florida. We have an agenda before us tonight. It's May 7, 2024, and I call this meeting to order. Councilmember Jackson, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Thank you all for being here, council, city staff, and those from the public and community, and those of you who are participating online at this time. Council, approval of the agenda as written, I believe, is, we have one item. There's no changes. Looking for a motion to adopt as written.
I'll make a motion to adopt as written.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis. Any further City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. Thank you very much. Approval, or I'm sorry, the public participation portion of the meeting. Again, those of you, I do have one card up here. Ms. Peg Schaller, if you're ready, you can go ahead and come forward. Anyone else that intends to speak, please, we ask that you complete a card and bring it here to our deputy, and we'll make sure you're heard. And for those of you listening online, please raise your hand. Ms. Schaller.
As we previously talked about, code enforcement has been on the threat category under the SWOT analysis. And I felt threatened as a new business owner, there's no doubt. I've met with Todd several times, and I am comfortable that he has gone through the questions that I had, and he has asked his staff the answer to these questions. He is aware, and I've made it clear, that that doesn't change my opinion of the actions that have happened. They're just my opinion. But I've also stated the facts of what have happened. And then, I know that there's like my side, his side, the truth, and the facts are the facts. You guys will be able to see them. The interpretation of the facts are different. But I do appreciate Todd going one by one, asking the questions, getting the answers. And it's okay that we disagree. I'm just thankful that he took the time to do it. The big picture is, is that we get this right as a city, because you cannot retain business and you cannot attract new business if there is an issue that deceit, or corruption, or retaliation could possibly be in play. So I'm grateful. I'm glad that we're taking this time to do it. And thank you, Todd, for going through these items one by one and getting the answers that you did. If possible, I would like to possibly speak at the end of the meeting. I'd like to know if that's possible.
I do not have a problem, council. Any issue? Yes, I'll make sure that the public has an opportunity at the end.
Just, yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. If anyone else intended to speak, I do not have your card. Please raise your hand.
I can answer any questions.
Yes, please. Ms. Visadomini, please come forward to the mic, those who are listening at home on the record.
What's my intention that I can see the ordinance over at me?
And you can do that at the end if it's convenient.
Somebody brought to my attention about, there's some kind of ordinance going on about buildings that are in noncompliance. You know, I don't come that much anymore. But when I used to come, Mr. Morgan was still here. And I believe he said that we were like 82% noncompliance in our city. And what he, and I know, I was trying to look for the amendment. It was either in 2010 or 2011, any building that had any, say, issues, like a fire, remember fire being one of them. They did not have to follow the new codes. And the reason, I was at the meeting, I'm like, what, 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 what? And you know that you own property in Cape Canaveral, and we had to give some of our property back for the sand transfer program. And he said, he said, Mrs. Visadomini, it's not you. You would fall onto this umbrella, because it wouldn't be necessarily be in compliance or not be in compliance, but this rule is to protect anybody in the city that has a building that had some kind of destruction due to hurricane or fire, and they would have to meet the codes that were there when it was built. They could not take down the building to meet the codes. This was brought to me late Saturday, I think. So I didn't know how we stood in the city, was who was working, who wasn't working, and I didn't want to walk in and have someone not be able to get me to the proper files. But if that, if someone could just reread the amendment that you're speaking of, but I want someone to look into that, because, and I know Jim Morgan was spearheading it, and I believe he died in 2011. So it had to be in 11 or 10 that we discussed this and it was passed. So can I have the amendment read again so it could, like, help me figure out should, which side of the fence I should be on here? All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Want to address that. City Manager, are you familiar with the, what Ms. Visadomini is talking about?
Vaguely. There's, there's been some amendments to our nonconforming section of the code. I think the best thing to do would be for Ms. Visadomini to meet with David Dickey and just review the current code as far as nonconformities. And then you can look for any ordinances that revised this section relating to structures, and then provide them to her, just give her, copy those ordinances.
And my only concern is, knowing that Ellie Mays is there, they have that.
Ms. Visadomini, I know it's, if you are going to respond and you want it to be heard, we do need you to come back to the podium, and I want to make sure, council, we're okay with, thank you very much. Yes, please.
So, I'm not, again, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, because I don't, I didn't read the amendment. I was just, sorry, I just walked in. But I know that there was a fire. It was a Friday night. It was a Friday fest. And I know the building in question that Ellie Mays is in had a fire. So if undue leverage is being against that fire, I said, wait a minute, there's a law on, we changed this, and I know it was Jim Morgan. And, you know, I couldn't call Buzz, because he's not here anymore. Can't talk to Rocky, because I don't think he'll remember. So I just, before we rush into something that's going to cause a lawsuit, let's just take a look at it. I don't know if it's been revised again, but if it had been revised again, I would have hoped that the people that were not in, that the 82% of the city that's not in compliance would have gotten notification that that was going to be taken back after they gave it to us. And it's just a real question.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Willis, did you want to speak?
No, I just, I don't think it's germane to Ms. Schaller's issue at this point. So it is something we should be looking at. And Mr. Dickey and Mr. Morley and I have discussed it in the past, and we were also going to be looking at it again to make sure that we were solid on our code for those things. But I don't think it, it, at this point, is something that we would even be considering with Ms. Schaller, since that structure was not destroyed.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel, any other comments? That's it for public participation. Just to be sure, anybody else that'd like to speak, please raise your hand or come forward. Seeing none, for those of you online, if any, please raise your hand. Seeing none. No hands raised, we will go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting, bring it back to the council. Item for discussion tonight is to receive the city manager's report of findings regarding the community and economic development, department roles, responsibilities, and actions for properties located on Fillmore Avenue and Jackson Avenue update. I think it would be wise for us to allow the city manager to, I think, give an introduction as a way of understanding, this meeting was scheduled at our last regular, or I'm sorry, the last special council meeting. And the, we broke it up, I mean, the topic is community and economic development, but we broke it up with Jackson Avenue first, and then we went in, I'm sorry, Fillmore Avenue first, and then we went into Jackson Avenue. And it really came from the January 24 meeting, special meeting at the beginning of the year, where 10 items came out of that. And we have been monitoring it along as, as we made progress. This was another testament of progress our city manager worked on, I would say, related to, going back to the meeting, item number five, which was, city manager and city attorney present any findings and/or opportunities in a report to be distributed to the city council on ways the city can improve our community development department. And number, that was for Fillmore Avenue, really related to the building, department and permitting side. And the same, at least was the intention, but number five for Jackson is worded a little differently. It's present any findings and/or opportunities to be distributed to the city council on ways the city can improve our community development department as it relates to code enforcement. So it was really important that the city attorney have an opportunity to weigh in, to help address the issues I think that Ms. Visadomini is raising, and certainly Ms. Schaller and all the families impacted around Fillmore as well. And so if we could just remember, we have two issues. I think our city manager took them one by one as an investigation one and investigation two. I believe we all received this report yesterday evening. That's when I, and so late, I think, maybe after 5:00 or 6:00 PM, around, around that time. And obviously, haven't had full 24 hours yet, but we've done, I've done at least my best to get through it. And before going over to our city manager, council, I don't know if you've been able to spend some time, certainly understand if you haven't, but I've dug in. I certainly want to read some more. My hope was today is that we can listen, ask questions, and continue that until our next meeting. So with that, does that sound okay? Let our city manager go through the two, starting with Fillmore Avenue. And I just wanted to make the connection that this is called findings. Well, why are we doing findings? The specific actions, number five for both of them, which does speak of recommendations, but the recommendations are forthcoming based on findings. And city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this is from you and our city attorney is, has not had a chance to go through and provide.
Yeah, I can't speak to whether or not Anthony's reviewed the findings at length. I know that he did receive them, he was sent them yesterday. I don't know if you had a chance to go through them.
I've done a cursory review of them, but.
Understood. So today, city manager, we are all in the same, I think, position as our city attorney.
Sure.
If there's not anything else, we can go ahead and let him begin. Good. Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. This was quite a labor to get through this. Required several different lenses to get to the bottom of things, and several different revisits on, on topics to get down to things. What I'm presenting here is findings based on where I was specifically looking, which is to say, there may be areas that are tangentially related to some of these things, that I did not go down that hole and discover. So I don't want to say this is a be all, end all. This is the only thing we're ever going to look at. And weeks from now may uncover more things, years from now may uncover more things. This is just a snapshot of where this investig, these two investigations led me. So I wrote down everything here in the most objective way possible. I'm going to kind of read through the report as it's presented. I'll probably skip through some things, and please feel free to interrupt if there's any questions. We can stop, we can take a break. I don't have any preconceived request of the council after presenting these findings, because council may find that there's gaps that we need to get filled and look at it again. Or you might say, wow, you've covered everything, let's proceed to the next step, which would be recommendations. And that would be at a future meeting. I think we're all going to see, recommendations are very evident in a lot of these when you read it, that it's pretty obvious what the recommendation's going to be, but we didn't state it, because we want to keep it just to the, the findings. This is what actually happened. So starting at the top, as mayor said, it's, there's two investigations. One is about the certificates of occupancy issued for, without incomplete site development work on Fillmore, and perceptions of collective, selective code enforcement related to property on Jackson. The goal of the report is to combine what happened with why it happened in an unbiased, objective manner. As I said before, it does not include recommendations, which will be forthcoming. It's laid out generally chronologically. To maintain the report's focus on the larger picture of actions and reasons for those actions, a great deal of information has been significantly condensed. So that's why some timeline entries are going to be grouped in months, with general summary actions, and others are going to be referenced by specific dates when those dates are helpful to have. So investigation one is about the COs, certificates of occupancy issued for 304, 306, 314, and 316 Fillmore. And what I did is, there's four findings we're going to see in this item, and all four of them, I moved them up front, so we could just start with that. We're going to start with the ending, and then we're going to go back through and see how we got there. Finding number one, city code section 110-223B2 requires site plans be submitted to the city engineer, building and code enforcement department, fire marshal, and public works services department. The building and code enforcement department was not forwarded the site plan submittal. So they never reviewed it. Note, the building and code enforcement department no longer exists as a single department, but that's not a reason to exclude them from site plan review. This is one example of a needed code update. Finding number two is that the COs were issued without an affidavit from the engineer of record. The reason for that, there's two. Building official was unaware of city code section 110-221, which required an engineered site plan for four or more residential units, and therefore, an engineer of record. Number two, the building official was unaware that the noted section of the certificate of occupancy application was intended to be used to reinforce city code section 110-221. So those two things right there were meant to capture this and require an engineer of record to sign off the site before the COs were issued. The unawareness of these, of this code, and how the CO was to be, CO application was to be used, is what caused the engineer of record to not be requested to sign off before the COs were issued. Finding number three, the building official did not timely receive the city engineer's email regarding the incomplete retention system. That was an email the day before, and the COs were issued without the building official's awareness of the issue. And finding, finally, finding number four, verbal approvals were relied on from the former city engineer and the former public works services director. So those are the findings. Now let's go back and rebuild how we got to those. We start with the investigation timeline about the site plan. The site plan was approved on December 9, 2020, for the four units, Villas, Fillmore. Email records indicate the site plan submittal was forwarded to the city engineer, the fire marshal, and public works service department. However, the submittal was not forwarded to the building and code enforcement department for review and comment. So that is how we got to finding number one. Moving on, accordingly, there was no site plan review and comment from the building official. The site plan included an engineered plan, which included an engineered stormwater drainage system. So we have two notes about this. The plan called for the installation of a new stormwater inlet in the area between the driveways of 306 and 314, not in the driveways. And that new inlet would then connect to an old existing stormwater inlet. In the approved plans, the location of the old existing stormwater inlet, which would have been located in the driveway of 306, was to be covered with a concrete lid to accommodate the completion of the driveway without a stormwater inlet in the driveway. That's the way it was supposed to be in the approved plans. Note two, the plan did not indicate the existence of the FPL pole and the handhole, which would be in the location of the drainage swale. And we're going to talk about that some more, too. Next, we have a table that simply shows the permitting and ownership transfer dates. We've got the four addresses, their permit numbers, the dates the permits were issued, the dates of final inspection, the dates of CO, and the date of sale for each one. Next section is about the stormwater system design deviation. During the construction of the site, the owner, at the time he was interchangeably referred to as the developer, met with the former public works services director and requested a modification to the approved stormwater drainage plan, notably to redirect the outfall of the system to the old existing stormwater inlet, which would be in the driveway of 306 Fillmore. The former public works services director verbally approved the request, and no documentation was submitted, reviewed, or approved. It was simply a verbal approval. Then we move into issuance of COs. August 5, the former city engineer provided a memo to the staff indicating that he had completed an inspection and noted certain site improvements were not in compliance with the approved stormwater system design, and that he needed additional information. 11 days later, or 12 days later, it was either August 16 or 17, the former city engineer performed a site inspection at 314 and 316 Fillmore. And on that, August 16 or 17, the former city engineer provided verbal confirmation to the building official that the site work was acceptable for all four units, 304, 306, 314, and 316. We have no documentation of this. This was a statement made by the building official, that he received verbal approval from the former city engineer. August 17, 2022, having passed all inspections, as well as receiving the former city engineer's verbal approval, the building official issued the COs for 314 and 316 Fillmore. Fast forward to October 5, the former city engineer conducted a site inspection at 306 Fillmore, and this was at the request of the pending owner, Hearst, and provided a memo to CNED staff indicating the detention system had not been constructed properly. Note, the building official did not initiate the former city engineer's inspection, and was not anticipating a coming memo from the former city engineer at the time. Next day, October 6, the building official issued the COs for 304 and 306 Fillmore, and he was relying on the previous verbal approval from the former city engineer, which he said was acceptable for all four units. These are the statements of the building official. October 7, the building official received the former city engineer's October 5, 22 email regarding the improperly constructed detention system. So at this point, the horse, the horse is out of the barn. All four COs are issued, and now he has documentation that there was a problem with the detention system the next day. Subsequent to that, the building official, the former city engineer, and the CNED director discussed the former city engineer's October 5 email, and they elected to pursue an after-the-fact compliance for the corrective action needed for the detention system. And we're going to talk about how the code refers to that as well. Continuing timeline, during the months from October 22, from February to February 23, various site meetings and inspected, inspections were conducted among and between CNED staff, the former city engineer, and the developer. Correspondence was forwarded among the new owners, the developer, CNED staff, the engineer of record, Allen Engineering, Mayor Morrison, and city manager Morley, that's me. The developer began attempts to resolve the outstanding issues to the construction of the stormwater system. This was now an after-the-fact effort. And unsuccessful attempts at correcting the swale were undertaken by the developer. Note, the location of the FPL pole and handhole were in the, were in the designated swale area. At this time, the swale was constructed with a jog or a bump out around the pole and the handhole. This was not shown in the approved engineer drawing. Additionally, some work had been performed to move the location of the swale at 314 and 16. The developer was instructed by CNED director that if this reconfiguration of the swale would indeed remain, the city would require this reconfiguration to be evaluated and approved by the engineer of record, and then reflected in his as-built docs. The developer indicated he would cause the improvements to be made with the oversight of the EOR. The developer contacted the EOR and requested he assist by placing appropriately marked stakes in the swale to guide the corrective action. Moving on to the month of March of 23, the stakes were placed by the engineer of record, and then the mayor, city manager, and CEO director visited the site. At this time, it was noted that the FPL pole and handhole should not be there, as all utilities serving the new development are required to be placed underground. Then, in the months between April of 23 and January 24, the developer, realizing he needed to have the FPL work done prior to completing the stormwater work, was instructed to contact FPL. Staff worked with the developer and FPL to request the removal of the pole and the undergrounding of the utilities. FPL made two attempts to perform the necessary work, both unsuccessful. January 19, 2024, city manager spoke with FPL external affairs manager in an attempt to prioritize the necessary utility work. January 23, the developer corresponded with CNED staff, reaffirming his intention to complete the drainage swale work. And the next page, January 24, this was just prior to the council meeting that was to be held that evening. City manager held a meeting with the building official and the CNED, CNED director, and we reviewed the CO applications for the properties. A particular section of the CO application was discussed. In this section, it states, engineers or architects statement that the site construction is in accordance with the approved site plan, and that all construction has been in compliance with applicable codes. Next to this statement is a blank space, a line, and that underneath it is for the building official to put the date that the engineer's record, engineer of record statement is received. Under this section is a clarifying note. The above requirements pertain to multifamily over three units and all commercial projects. It was explained that the intent of the form is to ensure that the building official receives the engineer of records approval statement by noting the date that the EOR submits documentation that the site had been constructed in compliance with the approved engineered site plan. I just want to add that that CO application is the same CO application that was there when I was building official in the early 2000s. It's unchanged. It's the same form, so I'm very familiar with The building official was questioned as to why he wrote per John Picar and the blank for the date. He responded that this was his typical procedure for single-family resident COs. It was discussed that there was an engineer of record for the project, Allen Engineering. The question was asked, why not request the EOR statement? The building official responded, he did not know why there was a need for an EOR, because these were single-family residences. He was directed to the city code section 110-221, which provides the following, and this is just a copy and a paste. Section 110-221 is called submittal and review required. And section A says, under this chapter, site plan submittal and staff review shall be required. And section A says, under this chapter, site plan submittal and staff review shall be required for all development and redevelopment projects except single-family, two-family, or three-family dwelling units or alterations thereto, and minor commercial improvements. And it adds, further, site plan submittal and planning and zoning board review is required for the following. First is new commercial buildings or structures, and the second is new residential structures with four or more dwelling units. Building official at that time stated he was unaware of city code section one ten dash two twenty-one, which required an engineered site plan for four or more residential units. And the building official stated he was unaware that the noted section of the CO application was intended to be used to reinforce this section of city code. Then we had the January twenty-fourth city council meeting. We discussed this item. Council reached consensus on several key actions toward a resolution as recorded in the minutes. Of note, the new city engineer, Kimberly Horn and Associates, was tasked with evaluating the current status and making recommendations to ensure city codes related to site development are followed. January twenty-fifth, the following day, we held a meeting in my office between Mr. Baez, who's the contractor, Mr. Whitaker, who's the owner developer, the mayor, or, I'm sorry, the former owner and developer, the mayor, the C N E D department director, and the city manager. Steps toward completion were communicated to all parties. On January thirtieth, FPL crews installed the underground electrical service. In April of twenty twenty-four, the building official submitted his resignation letter. In the subsequent discussion with the city manager and department director, he restated his position that he viewed the four units as single-family residences and thereby not requiring a site plan, an engineered common storm, stormwater drainage system, or an engineer of record. When, when again questioned about the language of city code one ten two twenty-one, the building official provided the following. The four units are viewed from the perspective of the Florida Building Code as single-family residences and were permitted as such. He said the four units were infill lots in a long-established subdivision and not subject to site plan-related code requirements. And he stated, single-family residences only require the city engineer's approval prior to issuing a CO. When questioned as to what his understanding of city code section one ten dash two twenty-one, where it references new residential structures with four or more dwelling units, building official stated he interprets this to mean new residential structures with four or more attached dwelling units, meaning under one roof. A note, city code section one ten dash one twenty-one provides that issuance of a CO shall not be construed as an approval of a violation of the previous, of the provisions of the city code or any other applicable law. So this section of code supports an after-the-fact completion of the site work, which is still ongoing. Next note I want to point out is city code section one ten dash ninety-one provides that use arrangement, construction, and design at variance with those authorized by the plan specifications intended uses and applications shall be deemed a violation of this chapter and shall authorize the building official to revoke or suspend any previously issued building permits or COs or pursue any other remedy necessary to carry out his or her duties under the chapter, under this chapter and other applicable law. My comment on that is that the building official stated that he, what, he understood that he had the authority to suspend or revoke the COs. But because the units were now occupied and the developer and the contractor indicated their desire to cause the needed work to be completed, the building official did not exercise this option. So that leads me to finding number two. The COs were issued without an affidavit from the E O R because the building official was unaware of city code section one ten two twenty-one, which required the engineered site plan and therefore an E O R. And the second part of that, the building official was unaware that the noted section of the CO application was intended to be used to reinforce that same code section. That's the reason the COs were issued. The building official did not, finding number three, the building official did not timely receive the city engineer's email regarding the incomplete retention system, and the COs were issued without the building officials awareness of the issue. And finally, number, finding number four, verbal approvals were relied on from the former city engineer and the former public works services director. Mayor, that's what happened in this case. That's what got us to where we are.
Thank you very much. Counsel, if today we can capture questions, maybe some we can get answered. Are there any on these, or, so this is Fillmore, we're at five oh six P M. There's four findings for Fillmore. Jackson Avenue has estimated ten, maybe to twelve? Okay, and so I think I would like to go through with, with the counsel, the four and see if there's any questions at this time. And knowing we've got Jackson coming with more, we'll try to manage time appropriately. So counsel, any general questions or specific to the findings? Let's start with number one. Yes, Mayor Protim.
Yeah, I have a few questions. So it, it states that the building official didn't know or didn't understand the code. It seems to me like he just interpreted it different than it should have been or it could have been. And then my, why did he, I mean, if, if it comes out where he's interpreting it different from the engineer, what happens? Where's the process for that? I mean, it's, it's not like he didn't know about it. He just, to me, it seems like he interpreted it different. And I, I have the letter from the, the assistant building official, and he stated the same thing, that calling these structures multifamily dwellings versus townhome has created a false impression that a drainage plan was required. Townhomes are considered single-family, and single-family residents are exempt from these requirements of a drainage plan. And then also going through this, Kimberly and Horn, in their report, called it two duplex buildings containing four dwelling units. So a structure to me is one building. So there's two buildings with two units in each of them. So how is that four or more dwelling units under the same roof, then I think that that would kick in? I mean, I'm asking to try to understand this. And then my next question is, on August fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, the engineer, city engineer did an inspection and noted that certain site improvements were not in compliance with the approved stormwater drainage system. So from that time to August seventeenth, when the CO was given for three fourteen, three sixteen.
Mayor Protim? Are you on page two on the table? Help our city clerk, who I think is helping us. Thank you very much.
So it says that he didn't timely get the email from August fifth to August seventeenth, he didn't get an email?
That was referring to the October fifth email.
Okay, so then that, the, so on August fifth, when he said, you know, there's a problem with the system, the drain, stormwater, it applied to the whole building. I mean, what, I don't understand why it wasn't timely when it was from August fifth to October sixth for the second occupancy. The same problem was there in the whole site.
Except that on August sixteenth or seventeenth, there's an entry, a bullet point, that says the former city engineer provided verbal confirmation to the building official that the site work was acceptable for all four units.
So what changed from the fifth to the sixteenth?
This week, we received an email from Mr. Whitaker that I believe talks about that. And I don't have that in front of me right here, but what I recall he said in that email was that they had constructed the swale, and then FPL came in to install underground lines. And in so doing, they messed it all up. And that he was trying to work with F P and L to fix it, and it, and it did not get fixed properly. So that would explain why between August fifth and August sixteenth, the city engineer went out there at some point and said it was good because that's when that work must have taken place. And then subsequent to August sixteenth or seventeenth must be when FPL went out there and dug it all up.
So then just going back to if the building official interpreted the code wrong, is there a procedure that happens if there's a disagreement between what the code says and what the building official thinks?
Yeah, and to begin with, when I met with the building official on January twenty-fourth, his statement on that day was that he was unaware of that code section. So there wasn't an interpretation issue. He, he stated that he was unaware of it. The interpretation issue came upon the building official submitting his resignation letter. At that time, the some months had passed from January to April. He evidently had some time to review this code section. And he now indicated that he doesn't think that it is being interpreted appropriately. And that's.
Could it be that, I mean, I'm again just asking, when the former city engineer, he said it was okay because the building official said, we really don't need that because it's not, you know what I'm saying? Like, he, the building official told the engineer that they don't even need a drainage plan. So why is it important? Just give him the CO. I mean.
I don't know that the building official told the former city engineer that we don't need a drainage plan. He may or may not have said that to him. But when it came, what the building official was saying is that when it comes to single-family homes, his routine was, he just wanted this, the city engineer to sign off, and that was good enough. And that was being kind of blind to the fact that, hey, this project received a site plan. There's an engineered site plan with a common drainage facility for all four. It's kind of being blind to that to say, no, we're just going to require the city engineer for each one.
So there's, the same exact contractor is building houses, same thing on Jefferson? Do they have a, the water, stormwater? It's two buildings.
That's not the subject of this report of findings, but we can talk about that, Mayor, if you like.
Well, I'm just asking.
And is your question, the procedures followed for this development on Jefferson Avenue? How are they different?
Right.
I'm okay.
Okay.
It's relevant.
I know that city attorney has talked to the department director about that, and he talked to me briefly about it. And, and I would just soon turn it over to the city attorney at this point to talk about the difference between Fillmore and Jefferson and the development that's happening there, and why they're, why they're different.
Ms. Fitznamony, is there a point of order information? I will open up public comments. Okay. You wanted to speak? I'd like to give the council the chance to, to all finish speaking. I'd like to let finish. If it can wait, we'll certainly make sure your, your question's heard. Thank you. City Attorney?
I've talked to, I talked to the, the city manager, I've spoken to community development, and I've read or understand, you know, the basic facts here. In my view, there's a major distinction between what hap, what's happening on Jefferson and Fillmore. Fillmore was platted as a townhouse project for townhouse lots and is subject to declarations and restrictions and covenants as a unified project. So there were clearly four residential units being constructed at the same time. While they may be in two different buildings, two units, two residential units per building, they're, they're a unified project. And that's the way the staff, in my opinion, rightfully reviewed it as four residential dwelling units. On Jefferson, on the other hand, if you recall, that property was zoned commercial, that the property owner at the time, when it came into the city and rezoned the property, I believe the R two, which is, allows for detached single-family homes as well as duplexes, that property owner at the time platted three lots without any, any building plans that were, you know, fully developed and presented to the staff. So when that plat was approved, there were three individual lots that could be used for either detached single-family homes because they were adequate size, or they could be used for a duplex consistent with R two zoning. And they don't have declarations and covenants. They were not being developed as a unified whole. The properties have since been, the lots have been conveyed to multiple owners who have the option to either do detached single-family homes or, or a duplex. Two of the property owners, my understanding is currently sought building permits. Coincidentally, right around the same time, using the, the same developer, but those property owners are constructing duplexes. There's a third lot that's undeveloped. My understanding is, at least the last time I talked with staff, maybe two weeks ago, there weren't any building permits submitted. So that could either be a detached single-family home or a duplex, depending on what the property owner wants to do with the property. So, I mean, I think there are a little bit of apples and oranges between Fillmore and Jefferson, in my view, the, the type of project. And then it goes to the provision that, that the staff or the manager laid out in the report, which talks about when there are, was it three or four or more units? They have to go through the, the site plan process.
Is there a code for this, this townhouse, like you were saying, in the commercial? Is there a code in our ordinances that talks about this that I could read?
There's a code, there's a site plan section of the code that talks about when a site plan is, is required. And then, and then there was a plating process. And council considers, you know, plats when they're submitted. And some, some may be townhouses, some may not be. It's the property owner's prerogative when they, when they submit the plat application, how they want to subdivide the property by plat.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim Callen, thank you. Just to, do you have any more? I want to summarize the ones you asked. If you have more, please keep going.
No, I don't, I don't think so. I, I just wanted to understand, you know, the difference between August fifth, when the engineer went out there and said it wasn't right, and then August seventeen. The time, I'm just confused about that. But, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes, City Attorney?
Yeah, the manager reminded me, you know, when you look at the distinction between Jefferson and Fillmore, when, when, when Fillmore was, was platted and declarations and covenants were put together, it was all done with a common, common drainage system for that townhouse project. On the other hand, on Jefferson, the three lots, there, there aren't any declarations or covenants with a common drainage plan. Now, under the code, and I think, just by way of example, remember the council, there was, there's a nimfill house going on and being constructed in, in Harbor Heights, right? And they were talking about the elevation of the house and so forth. Individual lots are subject to a onesie-type stormwater review by the staff to ensure that, that individual lot, and make engineers can correct, make contain. to ensure that, that individual lot, and make engineers can correct, make contain the stormwater for that particular development on one lot. So while there may not be a common drainage facility on the three Jefferson lots, each of those lots must have adequate stormwater system for that lot. That cover the stormwater issue?
Thank you.
So Mayor Tim, the question on August 5th related to the bottom of page two, right where our, exactly where it's showing on the screen in front of us, yours to, was it August 7th? Or what was the date you're asking about?
It said that he did not timely get the email. And I'm wondering if the engineer sent it on the 5th and the occupancy wasn't till the 7th?
Occupancy.
Of August.
Was on the 6th.
October.
First two were August and then the second two were October.
So if I could help recap, August 5th, the city engineer said there's a problem. Sometime between August 5th and August 16th or 17th, the problem was fixed, according to the email from the developer.
On August 5th, and I know you said, but he provided a memo. It wasn't a verbal. And you're saying the next point, August 16th and 17th?
Sometime between the memo of August 5th and August 16th or 17th, the developer has indicated in an email that we received this week that corrective, that the, the stormwater swale was constructed properly. And. You're saying October 6th now, are you?
Yeah. It's on the next page.
Right. So August 5th, engineer says there's a problem. The swale work gets done correctly.
Where's that?
That's in the email from, that I said we got this week from the developer. What he, what he's trying to do is piece together the rest of the story for us that, that I didn't have access to.
The email came from the developer?
This week. It was, council was copied on it.
Well, I think. Okay, I'm, yes, I have that letter.
Yeah, so what he's, what he's trying to say, if I understand his intention correctly, is after August 5th, they had this well constructed properly. That is why on August 16th or 17th, former city engineer provided verbal confirmation to the building official that the site work was acceptable. So the, so on August 17th, two of the four COs get issued based on that verbal approval. And then something happened, according to the developer, with FPL doing work outside in the back to install lines that messed up part of that swale system, presumably to the west end, the west two units.
But he only issued COs, according to this, at the very bottom of page two, for 314 and 316.
In August, yes.
In August.
Right.
So August 16th, so that, basically that same day, when he performed a physical site inspection at 314 and 316, he did not perform one at 306.
But the, the building official's statement and the bullet above that is that the engineer provided verbal confirmation to him that the site work was acceptable for all four units.
The memo on August 5th is pertaining to 306. And I just want to capture Mayor Tim's question is, right, it, it's related to 306 largely. So, I mean, it would make sense if he approved the other ones, but I think 306 and 304 at least still haven't got COs. Are we saying that his inspection on the 16th and the 17th was related to, no, it says it's not related to 306, right?
On the, the, the one bullet point, that's the first one, the second one up from the bottom says, "August 16th or 17th, former city engineer provided verbal confirmation to the building official, site work was acceptable for all four units."
But he didn't inspect it that day. How could he say? You see what I'm saying? The bullet above it says on the 16th and 17th, the city engineer performed a site inspection at 314 and 316.
Yes.
And then the next day, he provides verbal confirmation that the work was acceptable. How could it not be, I mean, for where he did not expect?
This is the statement, this is the statement of the building official. The, the building official said that he approved all four units verbally, even though the bullet above says he only inspected 314 and 316. He says the, the verbal confirmation he got from the city engineer were that all four units were good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis?
So, city manager, you're basically just stating in here that he just didn't acknowledge that he inspected 304 and 306. He just went on the assumption that all four were ready to go.
All I can go off of is I've got a document that says he performed a site inspection on 314 and 316. And I've got a statement that he said all four units are good to go.
Okay, so you're just relating to us.
The information available to me.
His claims.
His comments, yes, sir.
You have a document stating, what was the document related to, 314 and 316?
Yes, that the former city engineer performed a site inspection there.
Where is that document? I have the August 5th letter that was in BSNA. It does not specify, it specifies villas at Fillmore. Doesn't, I don't see any addresses. And it's talking about the detention, this is a part of what Kim Lee and Horn, I think, looked at as well. And he lists five issues. He's talking about at large. Are you, is there a document for August 16th or, or for 314 and 316 related to those?
I may have misspoke when I said there's a document that could have been the building official's statement to me. Dave, can you provide any clarity there?
So the, the last written document was the August 5th letter? Okay.
So then it must have been the building official's statement. I stand corrected, Mayor.
Okay, so on August 5th, he provided the memo. I'm not even gonna, it's just, it's five, it's a letter. And on the 6th, so that letter was sitting there. This is, I think, Mayor Tim's question with the issues, the five issues. 10 days later, he goes out to the site, does the inspection, but there's nothing written that the city has ever received from his inspection.
Correct.
But it's specific that the inspection was to 314 and 316. How do we know that?
These are statements the building official made.
The building official told, is telling us that on August 16th and 17th, the engineer performed a site inspection for those two addresses. And then that same day, he says, all looks good on all the addresses. Okay, but the issues that were brought up prior were related to 306, a lot of them. So I think Mayor Tim's question I share is, the issues related to 306, he put in writing, he goes out and inspects, but we don't ever receive any closure on 306 verbally. And if he did, did he provide verbal confirmation with that inspection? According to our building official, it sounds like we don't know. We just, so our building official saying he received for those two addresses.
Mayor.
Do you see where I'm?
It may help, I think, if we try to connect these dots. August 17th is when the COs were issued for 314 and 316. It would make sense that the building official would request the former city engineer perform a site inspection on the day before for 314 and 16 because they were nearing CO.
Okay.
That's why he was sent out there to look at 314 and 316. That makes sense.
Yeah, that's exactly what happened.
Okay, so while he's there, evidently, the city engineer looks at all four units and says, hey, not only are 314 and 316 good to go, but 304 and 306 are as well.
Okay, and then on August, October 5th, August, September, a couple of months later, why is there a site inspection being conducted at 306?
That was at the request of a pending owner. I believe that pending owner was aware that something had changed in the backyard and things were no longer right. So that owner with that concern contacted the city engineer, unbeknownst to the building official, and requested the city engineer come out and take a look at it. City engineer went out, took a look at it and said, yeah, there's, this is, this is a problem. And he sends an email to the building official and other members of staff saying, hey, there's a problem out there.
He sends a memo, a written, the second memo?
Yeah, via email, right.
Well, and it was, yeah, I think it's the October 5th. And so if he requested inspections, if he initiated the inspections so that he could issue the CO for the two addresses, I would assume he would initiate for 306, but in this case, in 304, he did not. It was from the property owner. But how would he, what, I guess, it's, it's, does it make sense why he would have not just went ahead and issued all four COs at that time?
That's because the inside of the buildings probably weren't done for the other two at this time.
That's correct.
But he, despite the external issues in the memo the month prior from August, saying that, okay, so the building official says that the August 5th letter did, was verbally stated to be corrected by the, the engineer?
By the 16th or 17th of August, yes.
And he did not issue a building, while engineering, our city engineer was satisfied, were saying there were internal issues? Is that what he said or what we're assuming?
There would be a reason why the builder didn't ask for COs on 304 and 306 until October 6th. I don't know what that reason was, but probably having to do with something other than the site. There, sometimes houses get done inside, maybe the painting is done or the trim work is being done.
Wouldn't that be in the notes, though, from any issues from the other inspections? How would we know there were things not finished?
The builder can call for a CO anytime he wants, but he's not going to call for it unless he has achieved an approved final inspection. So why did, why had he not achieved an approved final inspection until October 6th? I, I don't know.
Okay.
You know, perhaps he's only got so many subcontractors that can only work so fast. They got these two units done first and they got these two units done second.
Okay, thank you. I am, I think that's a, that's one that I, that question Mayor Tim asked, I, I agree. It doesn't make sense to me. And this is, as the building official has stated. Mayor Tim, you had brought about the duplex for units. Why are we calling it four? Our city attorney, I think, gave a verbal explanation of that August and. Is that it for now for you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Trying to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So as I look at the as built and the occurrences, dates and all of this, I'm trying to understand, when you're looking, standing, looking at the property, I know 306 is there on the left and there's a grass area in between it and the next unit. I'm not sure what unit number that next unit is.
314.
314, thank you. And on 314, it was approved, but we had swell issues because the swell was corrected at that time anyway. So I'm trying to understand that piece of it because that was one of the ones that they worked on the swell. And it was actually further back on the unit, in the unit's yard, closer to where it should have originally been than 306. So I'm trying to understand, just like you all were talking about with 306 and the other one, I know there were some other window issues and some things like that, I believe that were corrected. But Todd, I mean, have, city manager, have you any insight on that piece of it?
I recall that the owners, the owners, excuse me, the owners of 314 and 316 had requested, I believe, that the swale be pushed a little further north at some point, and I believe that was done.
Okay.
And I'm not exactly when that was done, not sure when that was done. But I think the, the thing that the building official is focusing me on is on August 16th or 17th, the city engineer was satisfied that all of the retention looked good.
Okay.
And then he, he kept that fact in his mind as he started issuing the first two COs. And then two months later, the second two COs that was still in his mind. But we know that something had to have happened in those, that period of time that messed things up.
And that's what I'm trying to determine because from the developer's letter, you know, he's saying, well, let me ask first. The, we know that the swell was in the original approval of the site plan, right? Okay, and we know, whose responsibility ultimately is coordinating that pole removal? Because he does mention in his letter that the pole was there before they bought the property. But the code at the time was for all facilities to be underground, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so that right there kicks off a problem with the, the swell because of the existing power line locations.
And the handhole is at the base of the pole that extends into the swell too.
Okay, so that also is something, how did that get missed by us to where we weren't looking? Or were we, let me ask this, were we looking and trying to advise the builder, this is going to have to be moved? Is that something that we should do?
My best guess on that, I have had that same question. I look back to the pre-power inspection. And the pre-power inspection is an inspection that is done when the house is ready to be energized. All the switches and receptacles and cover plates are in place. The meter can looks really good and the inspector is called out to do a pre-power inspection. And he does that. I'm not sure of the dates of it, but they were before this. And he approves that. And when you approve the pre-power inspection, the building official then goes and sends a message to FPL. They're ready for meter and hookup, energize them. So at that time, it's very likely the pole was, the old pole was there, but the swale was constructed properly on or around that time. And then, and it looks good, city engineer looks at it, says it looks good. And then some days or weeks later, FPL shows up to energize those homes.
And then, some days or weeks later, FPL shows up to energize those homes. They bring in new overhead lines from this pole to that pole, they come down this pole, they have to add a handhole to get it underground, and that builds it out into the swell and kind of messes up the swell. And then they start digging all the lines to run them underground to the houses from there, which explains why the swells would have been messed up by that work.
Right. So I guess my question is how we would prevent it getting to that late stage of the game and us becoming aware that the facilities aren't underground?
That's why an engineer of record statement that the site was built in compliance should have been required before the COs were issued.
Okay. Thank you, that was one of my questions because, yes, the swell could be messed up while you're burying, you know, infrastructure like that. And, you know, I want to make sure that as we go forward with projects in the city, that we have a handle on that prior to that point, because that costs everyone. It could also delay a move in for a resident that's looking, wanting to get their occupancy permits.
And this just goes, ties right in hand in hand with it, there's this common drainage facility for all four units. And the fact that the building official can say a site plan is not required is hard to understand because that's one of the elements of the site plan requirement is an engineered drainage system. And that's why not having that engineer certification at the time of CO, that this unit is 100% good to go and electrical power would have been, that's the way it should have been done. But instead, there was no engineer of record final certification. It was a city engineer giving a verbal approval that all four are good to go on a certain date. And maybe they were on a certain date, but that's before they were energized. Then they get energized and now things get muddied up and messed up. And he's just remembering that verbal approval. Fast forward two more months to October, and he's still got that in his head, and he issues the COs for those two after they get powered up without going and looking and seeing there's a problem out back.
Okay, and then another question I had was in regards to the email that they didn't receive or they received delayed. In BSNF or whatever systems we have currently, are there ways to trigger this so that, I mean, that seems like a systems issue that needs to be addressed if some, if we're having to rely manually on making sure the right information is passed along to the correct officials? And there are systems that, you know, systems can usually sometimes help with those things.
There's definitely going to be a lot of recommendations that come out of this, but one of the first things, that's the stronger recommendation, in my opinion, is the CO application has to be used as it's intended to be used, which is you have to have this engineer certification before you even consider issuing the CO. If you have that document, you're looking for it, you're going to be scouring your emails looking for that document just so you can process the CO.
So this was more human error?
Yes. And lack of understanding of how the form was intended to be used.
Do we have a copy of that form?
There's not one here today, but there's hundreds, thousands of them in Laserfish.
Do we have the form?
We can get that form.
Is this the same form that was marked? It was used, but it wasn't used under the intent, I think, that you talked about, is that?
It's the CO application form. It wasn't used as it was intended. There's a blank there, the building official's supposed to write the date that the engineer of record certification was received, put the date in there. And there's a clarifying note underneath that that says, hey, you only have to do this when it's a new commercial project or three, more than three residential units. It's a clarifying note, it makes it very clear what that whole section is about. It's the top third of the back page of the CO application.
Built out by the applicant?
No, the building official is the one who writes in the date that he received the engineer of record certification. He's the one supposed to write that date in there. Because this is the building official's tool that we're not missing anything before we issue a CO.
This is an internal form that city, we use?
Yeah, yeah, there's several things on that. The first page has got, you know, the address, the permit number, all that stuff, and then it's got a line for the fire marshal to sign off if appropriate. You flip over on the backside and here's this engineer's statement right in the date and you write the date you receive at that section. And underneath that is a lot of check marks for, you know, was the sidewalks done, were plumbing final, building final, mechanical final, hydrant service approved by fire department? There's a lot of little checks in there the building official goes through. And at the end, if the building official is satisfied that everything is met, on the front page, he signs it at the bottom that it's all complete. And then that gets handed to the administrative assistant who actually prepares the certificate of occupancy.
Do we have a date for when the swell will actually be completed? I mean, the last time I went out, it was still kind of off kilter and FPL was on the way, or no FPL had just been there?
Yeah, I think FPL's done now. Although there's a question, I think it was raised at the last council meeting about the location of their lines and the depth of their lines, which we've relayed that to FPL that, hey, you know, what do we do about this concern? If there's a concern, how do we deal with that? As far as the swell work being done, the developer and the contractor were instructed that whatever work you're going to get done out there needs to be by a permit and we'll issue a permit. And whatever that permit drawing is, needs to be in an engineered drawing that will be submitted to our city engineer for review. And then we'll issue the permit. So they're trying to get that drawing. When asked why they don't want to just use the original drawing, because we would still use the original drawing, they said they want to see if they can get it approved with some changes from the approved drawing. So the inlet was supposed to be 24, the box, and then now it's 12 or something like that. There's some changes that they want to see if they can get incorporated into this revised document. What we said was, whatever revised document you submit, it's going to have to be reviewed by Kimberly Horn to make sure it meets our code. So they're trying to get that revised document.
Okay, and so that, one of the changes is the size of that drain in the middle between the two units?
That's going to have to be addressed by the, for the code, for code compliance.
Right, and I'm not sure what, are you sure? I'll go back and look, but I'm wondering what Kimberly Horn recommended or if they just noted the original size?
They noted the deviation from the plan.
Okay.
I don't know if they said anything more than that. Lexi, do you recall?
Councilmember, are you referring to the yard drain located between the two structures?
Mm-hmm.
So they did not make a comment on whether or not it would need to be sized up? That 15-inch minimum is typical for what's considered subdivisions. So what was put in there was a 12-inch. They would have to do basically a larger stormwater model and analysis to figure out if a larger drain is needed for there. So right now, their recommendation is, they don't have a recommendation to size it up at this time. They're more, their recommendations are more about the swales and the cross-sections in the area and that aligning with what Todd was explaining with building it, like reworking that site to accommodate what was initially approved.
Okay, and that's Kimberly Horn's recommendation?
Yeah, so, yeah, they noted that, you know, the, so what was initially proposed in the design plans as well as what was in the ASBILT was 12 inches. So from the beginning, the city engineer approved a 12-inch drain as opposed to a 15-inch, to make that clear. It wasn't a deviation from proposed to built, it was a deviation from typically what was in the code. But from the beginning, it was proposed to be 12 inches and it was installed as 12 inches.
Okay, that's very good to know, thank you. Also, what about the drain location at the street? Is that one of the changes they're trying to get?
They provided two recommendations for that potential, but again, this is all dependent on kind of how the site plan amendments flush out, either maintaining the current location and raising that, the elevation of the inlet that's there now, the current location being in the driveway right-of-way, or to relocate it back to the designed location in the design plans and modifying that existing structure. So they, there's two recommendations there if that concern is to be addressed.
Okay, so I'm repeating to make sure I have it because I'm writing slow. So put it back to the original design or raise the drain? Okay.
Yeah. Counsel made an additional statement. Mayor, if I could repeat it?
Yes, please.
Counsel said, we prefer the location to be in the space between the, I'm going to call it the mailbox area, if possible. It would be the approved, but if it can't be, please explain why it can't be. If there's some difficult thing to overcome in making it go there, let us know. But that's the preferred location. So the counsel came up with that at the last meeting, I believe. So that's been relayed to the developer as well.
That's correct.
Okay. And just trying to get an idea of when, I'm trying to get an idea of when we can look at forward motion on getting this resolved. But I know we're waiting for them to file permits, am I correct? And they're waiting on engineering?
It's one permit with one engineered document that we're waiting for. And the ball's in their court. I'm not sure exactly what difficulties they're encountering, but we're keeping the updates coming out to counsel once or twice a week at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Willis, comments?
Let's do this, I got a few comments. We're right at, I think, an hour, let's take at least five minutes, 10 minutes break. I think we can try to conclude, any questions to move on, and then we can shift over to Jackson Avenue and we can, so that we ensure we get through all of it. So let's try to reconvene 6 o'clock, quick five, seven minute break. Okay. See you back then.
We'll get started here in just a minute.
Counsel, are we ready to go? Okay, it is 6:03 PM. We have called the meeting back to order. We are on the first half, I'll call it, of the findings report provided by our city manager. We just had a chance to hear him provide them to go through. We've got some initial questions I think we're working through. Really want to make sure any questions that we don't have a clear answer on today, we try to communicate. And that may be none at this point. And between now and the next council meeting, we'll have more time, I think, to address. It is a longer report, and so I think we got a chance to go through the council. At this time, there was none. I do have a few. Counsel member Willis? If I understand, counsel member Jackson's question about the swale and the timing of the pre-power request, the swale, from my understanding, is, was not finished when FPL came in. And I think we had pictures and emails coming over from the property owners showing that that wasn't the case. I want to make sure I understand. Are we seeing the swale?
Well, I'm trying to piece things together with the developer's email from this week. But the only thing that I can really stand on, that I can say firmly, is our building official has stood by his statement that on August 16th or 17th, the city engineer provided verbal communication that all site work was acceptable for all four units. Being an honorable man, I take him at his word.
Okay. So were the swales complete prior to FPL coming in, or were the swales incomplete?
The email from Mr. Whitaker would indicate that the swales were complete, or at least near complete, certainly in a better condition. And then when FPL came along subsequent to that, they were put in a poor condition by FPL.
But did our, I understand, Mr., in our timelines, though, we were not involved in that. I know we're talking about what the developer sent over, or at the time, I assumed the property owner.
Yep.
But our building inspector did not know? All we had was what Mr., I mean, I guess I'm confused on why we're depending on Mr. Whitaker's letter.
I'm not. I'm relying on the building official's statement. That's the only one I can put my, sink my teeth into.
Which is that the swales were completed?
Yep. All site work was acceptable for all four units.
But the utilities were still in the air instead of underground, so...
Actually, I think what was in the air was not even for these. I think that the, I think, I think I was wrong when I said that was a new pole. Because I've seen some other pictures, and I think that pole was there before. So I would agree with the building official's assertion on that. I would also agree that there were lines coming to that pole. But those certainly were not lines that tended for four brand-new townhomes, because that pole has the transformer on it. So four service drops have to come from that transformer. Those were not, there were not four service drops going across to that pole. There was some other line up there for some other reason, some former use, I don't know. But the FPL would have had no reason to do four service drops many years ago to that pole. So the pole was there with some unknown utility lines over, connecting it. And then when we said all new lines are required to be underground, that's true, whether it's new or redeveloping. But certainly, there were new lines brought in at that point. Those new lines all had to be underground.
Those lines from that pole that existed prior to each individual meter had to be underground. And I think those always have been underground.
There's two poles. There's one at the very northwest corner of the property.
Okay.
And that's where the transformer is. And then there's a secondary pole, kind of in the middle, between lots two and three. The pole was there. Some overhead utility line was connecting those two poles. Don't know what that was for. But there were not four separate service drops coming off of this transformer for four new homes. There would not have been. There was no reason for that to be. Those four new service drops were done as a result of this new development. Those four new service drops needed to be completely underground from the point of the transformer. And that's where they are now. That has been fixed. It's done right now. That part of it's done right.
The transformer is the one on the northwest corner?
Yes, sir.
What's the pole that existed in the middle?
It was just, it was carrying some utility line. I have a guess. The condominium that's to the north, there's a concrete pad there. My guess is maybe there was a building on that pad at one point that maybe was served by that pole at some point. The building's gone, but maybe the lines just remained as an artifact.
But they ran their lines from that underground where the handhole was?
Not only that, they ran new lines from the transformer to that secondary pole, and then from that secondary pole down underground to a handhole, and there, from there to the house.
So that part of underground, that's always been underground. They don't run four overhead lines to each one of the dwelling units, right?
Yeah, yeah. But it had, they had to redo them, because now they're going to take this pole out. They're going back to the transformer now.
No, I understand that. I'm thinking, I'm saying that when they, when they put those lines in from that secondary pole that we're calling it, those lines were underground.
Yeah.
From my understanding, the swale was not complete at that point. From all the records, going back to the emails, they went underground, and the backyard was flat at that point. The photographs in the emails showed it. And so when we talked about having that swale done, and then FPL comes in, not at that stage, from my understanding?
Yeah. And that's something that Mr. Whitaker or Mr. Baez is going to have to clarify, because I don't have that information. I wasn't there at the time, and I don't know that the building official was there at the time, which is why I keep relying on, the city engineer said all four were good on August 16th or 17th. Because none of that matters if the city engineer said they're all good on August 16th or 17th.
But we don't have any evidence of that?
Correct. Just the verbal statement of the building official.
But not, have we asked the city engineer? Did you ask? Because it's according to the building official's verbal. He didn't provide any evidence that, no, I don't know if you could. You know, that's verbal. But does the city engineer say I gave verbal approval?
I haven't asked him that. But what's evident is he didn't give written approval. Because if he had, it would have been in that record.
But he did provide written concerns?
On August 15th, August 5th.
And did, did he ever provide written approval after the concern? So his letters addressed. So he'll put in writing the issue, and then when they're resolved, they're verbal?
Yep. That's one of my findings. That shouldn't have been relied on.
But that's a, that is not, we have not spoke to Mr. Picar about that.
Lexi, do you have any information on that point?
I don't. I don't, I don't want to speak for Dave without knowing if and when he's reached out to Mr. Picar in the past. I haven't been privy to it, if that's the case.
Yes, I have spoken to Mr. Picar about this exact issue and requested if he put anything in writing. And he didn't recall. He was going to go through his documents. This conversation probably occurred about six weeks ago. I have not seen anything from that, nor have I followed up with Mr. Picar.
But the building official has maintained that it was a verbal approval.
That is correct.
Okay. So we have the building official stating that it was provided verbally. Has the city engineer, are we aware of any other instances where the city engineer provided verbal approval for things?
Mr. German, the building official has indicated that that was a, as did Mr. Picar. He stated this to me, that that was a, that was a practice that he and the building official exercised on a semi-regular basis.
For single-family residences?
Yeah.
Okay. There was photographs that were, I believe, sent throughout the process from the Hearst family, you know, showing the realities similar to we've seen on Jackson Avenue. And the, from my understanding, is they came in, they did underground from that second pole, and then they came in and dug the swale. And that's when a lot of the questions came about, how deep are those lines? And so the timing of that, we can pause. I think that's one we might want to capture as clarifying. And it would be good to know if we can obtain anything from Mr. Picar to confirm, because I don't want to apply if Mr. Picar says, no, I don't, that isn't practice. We don't do that. Or he, we had a misunderstanding. That, to me, we're going to work on, we don't need to fix the problem. Because if he says that he always provides it in writing, I think we'll...
Is it counsel consensus, then, that we get a statement from Mr. Picar about whether or not he can confirm that it was a verbal approval in this case?
I think that would help us, or help me, certainly.
You got that?
Also, I think to the mayor's question is, in addition to have Mr. Picar either confirm or deny that this was a practice that he and the building official relied on was verbal approvals. Am I correct, Mayor?
Yeah, I think that that's, that would be good, yes. And...
So the two points, whether this one was verbal, and the second point is whether there was typically verbal.
And ultimately, while those are practices, I really want to understand, you know, what does our code tell us? And I think under this site plan, the city engineer's role is provided in our code. I would imagine, in this section, under...
The engineer's supposed to be reviewing the site plan.
Per the code.
Yep. And any submittals, revisions, yeah, all that. The city, for site plans, the city engineer is in a review and approve mode. But for single-family, he's in inspect and approve mode.
And does our code talk about the format in which the city engineer provides approvals?
No.
Does it say in writing? Because in their defense, if it doesn't, verbal, I think, would be okay.
It doesn't talk about it from the inspection standpoint, but from the plan review point, I believe there's words in there about shall be submitted to the director. Comments shall be submitted to, and I have always taken that as written. And I think you've always gotten them as written.
Yes, correct. I would, I would agree with that.
So I think an opportunity, Mayor, is, and as Anthony said, he's been working on this section already, tighten up that inspection part of it in the code as well.
Yes. And just knowing what applicable code governed this process here, that's, I think, a big part of the tasks.
Yeah. When I came on board as building official in 2002, 2003, that existing CO application is the same as it was then. And, and part of my coming in and learning the ropes of the job, you know, the staff was there to tell me, this is what this means. This is how this form is to be used. You make sure you get this engineer certification before you issue a CO. So to me, that was like week-one kind of stuff that I got from the staff. But there was, there was a longstanding staff at that time who had been there, who'd been doing this for years prior to me being there. By the time Mike German became building official, there was nobody left in that department that had those years of experience. So he inherited this form without any training about how it's used, without any understanding about 110, 221 requiring a site plan and how this form ties into that. So that, that lack of knowledge, I understand how that happened. There's institutional knowledge that wasn't passed down, and the code doesn't specifically tie the site plan to the CO application. So there's the perfect storm setting conditions right there. Now we're aware of it. Now we can make recommendations and fix it.
Thank you. So 110, 221?
That's the start of it.
Did the city form, the long, that we had used, I would assume, came from 110, 221?
Doesn't specifically say that, but yeah, it ties into 221, yeah.
So those requirements to have things signed, is that a, is that stated in the form, or is that in our code?
It's in the form.
Do we know if it's in the code as well?
I've never seen it in the code. I've looked for it, and I haven't found it. There's very little in the code about the processes of CO application. There's the requirement for a CO. There's definitely, you have to have a CO, but it doesn't talk about this. And I have looked specifically for it.
Thank you. Okay. So here we go. Just review procedures, 110, 223, section B. The site plan shall be submitted by the planning and development department to the following department directors for their review and comments, just like we said. City engineer or registered engineers. So that was, that site plan did go to the engineer. However, it did not go to the next one, which is building and code enforcement department?
Correct.
The fire marshal received it?
Yes.
It says that the planning and development department submits it, but isn't building and, well, no. Isn't that the same department?
They're under the same fund and the budget.
Doesn't the org chart, though, fall under?
It's all under community economic development.
And so how can a department who sends something, is this saying that the department, I don't understand how the department can't receive their own... Comments shall be submitted to, and I, I have always taken that as written, and I think you've always gotten them as written.
Yes, correct, I would, I would agree with that.
So I think an opportunity, Mayor, is, and as Anthony said, he's been working on this section already. Tighten up that inspection part of it in the code as well.
Yes, and just knowing what applicable code governed this process here. That's, I think, a big part of the tasks.
Yeah, when, when I came on board as building official in 2002, 2003, that existing CO application is the same as it was then. And, and, and part of my coming in and learning the ropes of the job, you know, the staff was there to tell me, this is what this means, this is how this form is to be used. You make sure you get this engineer certification that before you issue a CO. So to me, that was like week one kind of stuff that I got from the staff, but that was, it was a longstanding staff at that time who had been there, who'd been doing this for years prior to me being there. By the time Mike German became building official, there was nobody left in that department that had those years of experience. So he, he inherited this form without any training about how it's used, without any understanding about 110, 221 requiring a site plan and how this form ties into that. So that, that lack of knowledge, I understand how that happened. There's, there's institutional knowledge that wasn't passed down, and the code doesn't specifically tie the site plan to the CO application. So there's the perfect storm setting conditions right there. Now we're aware of it, now we can make recommendations and fix it.
Thank you. So 110, 221.
That's the start of it.
Did the, the city form, the long, that we had used, I would assume, came from 110, 221?
Doesn't specifically say that, but yeah, it ties into 221, yeah.
So those requirements to have things signed, is that a, is that stated in the form, or is that in our code?
It's in the form.
Do we know if it's in the code as well?
I've never seen it in the code, I've looked for it, and I haven't found it. There's very little in the code about the processes of CO application. There's the requirement for a CO, there's definitely, you have to have a CO, but it doesn't talk about this, and I've looked specifically for it.
Thank you. Okay, so here we go, just review procedures 110, 223, section B, the site plan shall be submitted by the planning and development department to the following department directors for their review and comments, just like we said. City engineer or registered engineers. So that was, that site plan did go to the engineer, however, it did not go to the next one, which is building and code enforcement department?
Correct.
The fire marshal received it?
Yes.
It says that the planning and development department submits it, but isn't building and, well, no. Isn't that the same department?
They're under the same fund and the budget.
Doesn't the org chart, though, fall under?
It's all under community economic development.
And so how can a department who sends something, is this saying that the department, I don't understand how the department can't receive their own? So this site plan was never sent to building and code enforcement in the beginning?
Correct.
So they were pursuing this project with?
Four single families.
How is it usually sent, emailed?
Yes, what happens is when we get an application, and this was, if you recall, this was pre-BSN A. So what generally happens is we'll get a, an electronic copy of a site plan approval. And our EA will farm that out to the various review departments. And she monitors that to make sure that we get comments back from those various review entities. She'll follow up with them, and then we'll take the comments, the planner who's ever working on the case will take those comments and, and prepare a staff report that goes to the planning and zoning board. That is the board that's responsible for approving site plans. In this case, I went back and looked at the email that was sent out. And it did, it was sent to everybody except the building official.
And code enforcement.
Yeah, and code enforcement, did not go to code enforcement.
Thank you, and who ultimately approves the site plan?
It goes to the planning and zoning board for a recommendation, and then I am responsible, as the community development director, for, I'll call it an administrative approval of site plans. Which as a, as an, can I make an editorial comment real quick? I do not like doing. I think that's one of the things that I'm working with Anthony on right now, is an ordinance change, is to get me out of that approval process. That needs to either go to the city council or somebody else, that should not be handled administratively, and so we're, 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 we're working on that right now. But currently, I ultimately approve that administratively.
What, so you're talking through site plan 110, 223H. Upon the receipt of the planning and zoning board's recommendation, the city manager or designee shall make a final decision on the application. So I don't I don't think it has to be you, I think it actually says the city manager first.
Yeah, it was written that way so that it could be the department director.
Yeah.
That's why the code was written that way.
Yeah.
So it could be.
Could be.
But he doesn't want that, and so what I'm saying is, is if, if he.
It could designate someone else, or have it be me.
I think Anthony and I have talked about that, and I think the concerns are, any, any level of administrative approval for site plan is, is concerning, but.
I agree, the, the code before that, Mayor, said the planning and zoning board had final approval on site plans.
What is the code before?
That was the code before, it said planning and zoning was the final stop, the board was the final stop, they, they had the approval authority.
And then they changed that?
It was, yeah, it was recommended, and the council changed it.
That change is?
To what it is today.
That, I don't think that's been in the last five years, has it?
My recollection is that occurred when Mr. Green was the city manager. And was his, I think his suggestion at the time.
I think that, I was, I think that was before I was here.
Part, part of that reason was he.
That's what I recall, I just remember the planning and zoning board having final authority, and then it, it switched on planning and zoning board, and I mean, I, I think it I think it should be a board and a public hearing process.
I agree.
Staff is fully aware of my opinion on that, so we are reworking that section of the code, and my recommendation is going to be that it go to a board at a public hearing. Not, not be done administratively, now in the small, small matters, that's a different, different story. Bigger site plan should be, should be vetted in public.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, yes, I think trying to follow our policy today, talking about ways to improve is, is good. My other question is, so the, as a director the role of the director in the site planning, we're saying is to take that out now, and we're going to rely heavily on the council?
No.
Or, or go back to an older?
At very, at the very least, go back to the way it used to be, but there may be other options as well. That, that will remove administrative final approval, that's our goal, get away from administrative final approval.
Okay, so the something was not forwarded, I think we talked about that. The finding two. I'm just going through. Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
On 10, 110, 222, the requirements and review criteria. Now, I've dealt with larger cities, so this may be something we just simply don't do. But I've seen nowhere in this code where we would define a utility easement. And most site plans do have a utility easement defined, so that the builder would know, you know, during the, the site plan process, where that utility easement is. Typically, Florida Power and Light or Spectrum would be the ones that would help define that entrance onto the property. And I don't see that, am I missing something?
The plat certainly would, would. Are you saying it, where in the code does it require?
We've got landscape that we want to see on that site map, and this is under 110, 221, submittal review and, submittal and review required. It talks about the size of dwellings and density, it talks about size, height, feet, all of these things. But, you know, to me, that site plan should include the utility easements, so that there's no question whatsoever moving forward where the entrance facilities would be for the utilities.
It's, it's an engineering issue. The site plan code does require engineer, engineering data, and part of that data is all of the utilities, streetlights, et cetera, drainage, so in conjunction with an engineered site plan that's required to be submitted to the city for review by staff and the city engineer, it has to lay out the utilities. So how they, the engineers of record design that, I mean, it varies, as you probably are aware, like, all over the place, so they design it, it gets reviewed by staff, if it's, if it's acceptable, that's when, okay, your water and sewer utilities are being proposed here, in this location, then there needs to be, you know, required easements. And they get, they match up the engineering on a plat, right, they'll, you guys will match the engineering with the plat, and and, and you'll start seeing on the plat all, and, all the easements.
Okay, so that comes in when the engineering doc is completed?
When the engineering data comes in, with all the engineered utilities and drainage, you know, it, it, it's required that, you know, that, if they're going to be public or private easements that are required, that's part of the review process, depending on how the engineers present their proposed plan.
Okay, and I see now under two topographic survey, including the following, and this might be where it's included, city attorney, is under two C lot lines and dimensions of all setback structures and easements. Okay, thank you.
And, and the section below that, three, engineering data, including the following.
Okay, perfect, I wanted to make sure, because we mentioned, you know, sewage and other things, water and sewer, but we didn't really pull that out, but that's fine if that easement's in there, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, so yes, on finding number one, I, I think that, as I'm giving some feedback, it says that on, on the bottom of page one, there are summary of findings for number one, on the that the code, the building and code enforcement department was not forwarded the, the site plan, they did not receive the site plan. Now, this is, this is, then it says building and code no longer exists as a single department, however, there's a reason to exclude these departments from the site plan, but there's no reason to exclude them.
Right.
This is an example of needed, so we're saying that the reason they were excluded, or we're saying it just.
I'm saying even that's not a good excuse.
Okay, and this is an example of a needed city code update. I don't know why the code needs to be updated.
Because it references building and code enforcement as one department, and they're not one department.
But that's not the reason they didn't send it?
I just put it in there because it was, it's a note.
Okay.
Just I don't want to lose track of this.
I think that the way it reads today, though, it's clear that.
Clear enough that it should have gone to building and code enforcement.
Okay, so there wasn't, there's not a, a code issue from what I see and, and understand.
That wasn't a hindrance here, it's just a note for myself that I don't want to lose track of.
And this is a public hearing item, right, the site plan, and, and we're all okay, the CO application was intended to use to reinforce city code 110, 221, that CO application has not been provided today? Is that what I understand?
We can get that application.
That would be one.
You want, you want to see the application for these properties, or just a blank one?
I'd like to see the ones for these.
Council consensus, Mayor?
You counsel, any concern with seeing the site plan checklist?
It's the CO. CO application.
Okay.
I have no concern over it, but we the whole report, the, the city manager is going to be bringing back recommendations on all the different changes, all the code changes, all the process changes, all the document changes that are, that are going to prevent us from having this issue again. If we're going to discuss them all tonight, we'll, we'll probably be here till tomorrow night, but I think we should let him finish the report, and we can delve into at a later date how he is resolving all of these issues. Give him that benefit.
Thank you, okay, and then building official training. And I know I asked about code, but it sounds like when he took over, he was not provided the training that he needed?
That's my belief.
Okay.
But there's also a, a job description at play here. The job description requires the building official to administer the Florida Building Code, all applicable technical codes and city code, so it was a matter of the job description.
Sure, and I think so he was trained sufficiently?
I'm, I'm, I'm saying I, I don't think he was, but he was still responsible for it.
Absolutely, I think understanding who is responsible within our city org chart for ensuring the building official is trained is really important. And the third finding three on the email did not receive the email regarding the incomplete retention, did not timely receive the email. Do we, we know it was the October 5th, and then the next day, 6th, and I think the report said they received it.
On the 7th.
Okay. And then the last finding four is the verbal approve. Yeah, I think things, it really doesn't exist if it's not in writing, I mean, I think we have to take that position right. And I wanted to see in our code, it sounds like it, it doesn't specify, and so that's, that's what I have for, for those, and I'm sure we'll have more, but yes, thank you on Fillmore Avenue, I got some public comment cards here, I want to just pause for Jackson to make sure they have a chance, Ms. Visadomani? Are you still here?
I am still here.
I wanted to see if you wanted to speak, you submitted another card, I believe? Do you need a full three minutes, or? Okay, thank you.
My concern was, my concern on Fillmore was as a resident, my concern was, who was going to, all right, now there's a problem, city's been made aware of the problem. For whatever reason, the city official approved it. Has nothing to do with anybody sitting here, somebody didn't do his job. Thankfully, he's left, and hopefully we have a better person in that position. My concern is, who's going to pay for this? Are we paying for this? This wires and the Florida power coming in, or is the I don't think the homeowner should pay for it, because he, they have a CEO saying everything's okay. And my concern is, who is paying for this next lap to be fixed? It sounds like it was a city problem, it was generated by a city official not doing their job properly. Okay, and I just want everybody to be aware of that. If somebody in the city approves something, you're a government agency, you're saying, this is done, this is okay. And when it comes across all of your desks from planning and zoning, and they say blah, 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 and you all sit up there and say, I approve, I approve, approve. You are relying on those city officials to be doing their job, and you're approving what you presume them to be doing correctly. Okay? Me, a resident who's lived here 30-plus years and our 1.9 square miles, have seen many many things that, if you have an engineer no one, the city engineer probably never even came to the site, because the engineer is doing everything. And it sounds like that's what happened here. If you have an engineer, the engineer is going to sign off saying everything is good. Somebody from the city calls the engineer, they meet at the site, is everything that we have in here that you, that the engineer wrote is completed? The engineer tells our engineer, yes, it's completed, they shake hands, they sign off, it goes over to, it used to go over to planning and zoning and moves forward. I don't know how you can fix that, and people are people. They're going to take the path of least resistance, if an engineer is doing it, I don't have to do it. And so I just think this is something that probably shouldn't have happened. And the engineer, when he went there, said it was okay. But obviously, it was okay.
Thank you.
But you have to be careful, because who's really liable for this now?
Thank you. Ms. Shannon Roberts?
First of all, I'd like to commend you all for looking at an internal process improvement opportunity, I guess is the way I look at it, and just in observing as a member of the public. And just in observing as a member of the public, I just wanted to suggest that the city consider a process that we use at the federal level, we'll call process mapping, and it keeps it from becoming, you know, a situation like the city has, at least helps anyway, to avoid what's happened with this particular situation. And what it involves, and you all talked about it, the process, you know, what's involved, what steps are involved, who the players that are involved, the time elements of the process involved, and it also talks about the approval level, which to me is very good that you all talk about that. Because as a member of the city, resident, I just think that some of the approval level's too low, particularly when it impacts the whole of the city, that it should be elevated. And in my opinion, should go back to what we used to do at council, which was to approve, PNC would approve, would recommend, and then the council would approve of some of these site plans and some of the major developments in the city, you know, which we've talked about before. We also have, at federal level, we call it AVO, avoid verbal, which to me, I'm just hearing what may have happened with good intentions, because the people here are all great, have got good hearts and are very capable, but sometimes when we rely on verbal, it, it sometimes can cause confusion or a step being missed. In my observation and listening to what's happened here, is that they may have happened in this case, because the people are not bad, and we do great hiring here, and this would have potentially avoided some confusion, and it would have also been clear, having the process map, which is just a one-page. It just has, you know, just a process of triangles. It makes it real clear visually what you're doing with any particular process the city has. And in this case, it could have possibly been mapping that, you know, approve yes, and then you have the people and the steps and the timing and the elements like FBL, you know, which was mentioned, you know, those are things that, when you have this one picture, visual learning is so helpful, it avoids a million words, you know, and that's just a suggested process the city might consider. But so, I would recommend avoid verbal. I would recommend the approval levels for decision-making be revisited, particularly for site plans, because the city gets, in my opinion, the residents get surprised by some of these developments. And if this council is looking at it, then we will be assured that we know about it. And then, and then the process mapping is a suggested best practice, and you and they, it's always kept current, it's a living document. So, as the process changes, you know, those changes can be made. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That was all I had for public comment cards, and if anyone from the audience, since we opened it up, we want to extend that. I do see one hand raised. If we're capable to unmute, I think I can handle that here.
Yeah.
If your hand is raised and you intend to raise it, please keep it up, otherwise, take it down. Mr. Campbell, if you can hear us, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. And give me just a moment.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Loud and clear.
Okay, I'm getting a little bit of feedback. First, I just want to say I wholeheartedly agree with Ms. Roberts' recommendation on, on process mapping. I would spread it out even process, flow charts, swim, metrics, all to be, be put in place. And then the other two things I want to ask about are, just so I can get my head wrapped around what I'm reading here, from what I understand, the, the units were built not according to the approved plan, and one of the methods or one of the activities that could have occurred when it was uncovered, that they were not built in accordance with plan, is the CO and building permits could be revoked. Did that, did that ever happen? Did any, was anything pulled back, revoked, or turned off? And my second question, I heard that, I heard the words that Florida Building Code, and they were built to some, and maybe I'm wrong on this, built as a single-family residence, that's how they're treated. And from what I understand on the definitions, these are really duplexes because they share a common wall. So, can somebody clarify, single-family residents versus duplexes for me? That's what I had.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. That conclude your comments?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I don't see, I do not see any other hands raised, and so with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment back. So, Mr. Pat Campbell, I assume that for the record, that's captured. The first question on CO could be revoked, was that done? My understanding is no.
The, the report did talk about that on page five. It says, note, city code section 110-91, kind of in the middle of the page there, says that, oh, that's two, okay, shall be deemed a violation, shall authorize a building official to revoke or suspend any previously issued building permits or CO, or pursue any other local remedy necessary. And italics underneath that, that's addressed, and I wrote, the building official stated that he understood he had the authority to suspend or revoke the COs, but because the units were now occupied and the developer and contractor indicated their desire to cause the needed work to be completed, the building official did not exercise this option. And the report also states that the building official did choose to exercise an after-the-fact compliance because of the willingness of the parties.
The developer and the contractor are the parties, not the homeowners, though?
Developer and the contractor. And to this day, the developer and the contractor have remained willing to cause the needed corrections as an after-the-fact compliance issue.
And I think is, the second question was the treated on the single, the difference between single-family home and a duplex?
It all has to do with the property lines. A duplex is two units within one piece of property. So, imagine a rectangle, it's one piece of property, and it's got two units on there. There's, there's a firewall between them for sure. And, and the code only requires a one-hour firewall separation in that case. In the case of townhomes, it requires a two-hour separation, and there's a property line underneath that firewall. So, two townhome units that are attached will have a property line going right down the middle of them, and there's a two-hour firewall right there on that line. That's the difference. So, I understand Mr. Campbell is asking for the difference between single-family and duplex. Single-family, obviously, is just one single-family unit on a piece of property. That's not the case here in terms, well, that was the building official's interpretation, that was that these are single families, because the townhomes under the Florida Building Code are defined as single-family residences. But with the city code, there's a property line, a two-hour firewall, townhomes. The Florida Building Code addresses the construction of them as single-family residences, and I think that's led to the building official's interpretation that these were single families and therefore only needing the city engineer's approval at the end. But when you, when you layer in the city code side of it, these are four units. This is a site plan. You can call them single-family, you can call them townhomes regardless. There's a site plan, there's an engineer of record, there's a common drainage facility. You'd need that engineer of records final certificate.
So, there's four units on Fillmore?
Yes.
How many units are on Jefferson, the, the example of a duplex?
Currently, there are three pieces of property. One has nothing going on. The other two have a duplex on each.
But how many units, though?
Four, four units, two duplexes.
Two buildings?
Two, no. It's one attached duplex under one roof on this property, one attached duplex under one roof on this property.
Is there a difference in the quantity of units between Fillmore and Harrison?
Fillmore and Jefferson?
Thank you, Fillmore and Jefferson. It sounds like they're both four units.
Yeah, but they're not townhomes on Jefferson.
I'm, yes, I understand that. I'm saying, but there, there's four units on each.
So far, there, there may be more on Jefferson.
Only two.
Two, oh, two units on each piece of property.
There's, how many units are on Fillmore?
One unit per piece of property, total of four units.
Okay. We're using units, buildings, structures. Some of those, I think, are synonymous, but you had said that there are four units on Fillmore. And when I see there are four, and we're calling these dwelling units, right? There were four dwelling units on Jefferson. So, just that alone, there, there's no difference in the duplex and the townhome from a quantity of units. There's four front doors. It'll be 110A and B.
Yeah.
And whatever the actual address is. And then the other ones have unique parcel addresses, but they're still both four units. There's two buildings. I assume building and structure are synonymous. There are two buildings on Fillmore, and each building has two units. There are two buildings on Jefferson. But those are duplexes because there is no property line that separate with the law, but as far as the number of units, the number of buildings, they're the same. So, is that right?
Yeah, I'm tracking with all of that. There's, the difference also is there's no common drainage facility on Jefferson.
Well, I think that, but you don't need a common drainage, we're not looking at all differences. There's a lot of differences. I think the, the site plan, I'm not challenging the site plan needed on Fillmore. Whether it was or not, it sounds like there was, you know, two positions. I think the site plan was good, and I think that the procedures that that site plan follows is really good, especially on Fillmore Avenue with the, the water. I do not fully understand why they're different, but other than the parcel line...
Different owners as well.
So, literally, it's a lot defined at the county with the tax parcel assigned to it for each unit on Fillmore.
Correct.
But on Jefferson, it's one tax parcel with two units on it.
Right.
And one lot defined through the county property appraiser with two units on it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead, thank you, and move on.
Mayor, if I could just restate my understanding of council consensus items from this before we move on?
Yes.
We're to get John Picar's comment on whether this was verbal, get John Picar's comment on whether verbal approvals were typical for single-family, and request copies of all the four CO applications for these four properties.
And I think you and I went through this and found some, maybe some areas. I would welcome any revisions to this that you see that can help clarify. I understand it was done on short notice.
Sure. I can go through it again and just call it, just revise for clarification.
If there, if there is between now, that way we can, I think, help move these along to...
I will say, Mayor, I did put a tremendous amount of time pressure on myself to get this out in two weeks, and that's why you didn't receive it until last night. I am going to need more than two weeks to get this, anything else done here, because we've got another council meeting coming up here, too. And I think we've come a long way on this item, and things are kind of rolling forward, so I just need to, I need a chance to breathe a little bit, and, and we have a CIP workshop coming up again, too. Yeah. So, I'm not, I'm not tapping the brakes, I'm just saying I'm letting off the gas a little bit, just to breathe.
That's, okay. I think you've stated you've got the findings from your side as far as you can. You're not saying that there could be more. Our city manager has not, our city attorney has not had a chance to get in, getting back to items five for each one of them. I think we'll move towards that, and thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
Nothing in this investigation is going to hinder resolution on the property.
Nothing at all.
Okay.
Two separate tracks. Mayor, if you're ready, I can go on to investigation number two.
One last question. This is a condensed version. Is there a lot, is there a more?
No, as the information was, Anthony's laughing is because it doesn't seem very condensed. As the information was coming my way, I put in things like from the months of September through December, this is kind of stuff happened. That's what I mean, I'm condensing that, rather than put specific information that's not helpful, that just would have filled up a lot more pages. That's what I mean when I say things are condensed.
Thank you. Yep. Let's, yeah, let's shift to Jackson, and again, all under the same hub. If we need to come back, we can. Counsel, good with that? Okay.
So, Mayor, if I can start?
Yes, please.
Like the last one, there are certain things that I looked into, and there, we may come across things that still need to be looked into. I'm not saying everything in the whole world was looked into. We might find, the council might find, you want some more things here, too, and that's okay. Just, I looked into the issues that were presented to me to the best of my ability, and I like to say I got to the bottomest, most bottom that I could get to those issues. So, my methodology here is a little bit different than the first one, and so I'm going to read through it. First one, my investigation began with a verbal interview with Mrs. Peg Schaller, and I just want to thank Mrs. Schaller because she's taken a lot of her personal time away from her business and her personal life to, to meet with me on, on a number of occasions to make sure we get this as right as we can get it. So, I want to thank her publicly for that. So, it started with my interview with her. She referenced several documents which were submitted to aid in my investigation. Her statements were later written as six condensed assertions. At a subsequent meeting with Miss Schaller, the assertions were submitted for her review and comment. After minor, minor modifications, she, her comments were complete. Then I began interviewing appropriate staff consisting of the Community Economic Development Director David Dickey, Code Enforcement Manager Brian Palmer, Code Enforcement Officer Chris Robinson, and Mrs. Schaller's comments were reviewed in detail. Step five, although not initial assertion by Mrs. Schaller, I added a seventh inquiry into the investigation. This was related to the fire which had taken place, one of the two fires, the latest fire, let me add that way, which had taken place on the property. Number six, I then held an interim meeting with Mrs. Schaller. You might hear to it, you might hear about it being referred to as the Starbucks meeting because we closed down a Starbucks, with Mrs. Schaller to review the status of the investigation of the six initial items and to gather her perspective on the fire item, which is item seven. Then, held additional meetings with appropriate staff to review all seven items. Both Mrs. Schaller's comments and staff comments have informed the findings reported herein, and these findings were reviewed with Mrs. Schaller yesterday for final comments. And I shared with her that a few other items that she asked for were put in here. So, she's up to speed on this, Mayor? And I don't know if she has any comments before I get started, Mayor, if you want to hear from her.
Well, I think she wanted the opportunity to speak at the end. She did speak at the beginning, and as I understood the comments, it was that your, the opportunity to meet with you is, the questions, she appreciates and understands you working through the questions line by line. However, the, the findings, the responses, I think, that you're receiving are, are still a concern.
Yep.
So, thank you.
So, the items, each one, each of the six items have their own findings. Unlike the previous one where I brought all the findings up to the front, I didn't do that here because they're all kind of unique to their own individual items, issues, I should say. So, we broke them down into the seven issues, and issue number one is her claim that code enforcement department conducted selective enforcement. So, she was referencing that her, she made a complaint about 7802 North Atlantic Avenue, that's the Moon Hut, for evidence of a code enforcement violation related to the paving of a parking lot, specifically that the paving work had been done without a permit. They placed new impervious pavement over an area that was previously pervious. In other words, it was, you know, water could go through it. And third, they didn't have a requirement for an engineered stormwater retention facility. Why that was important to her is because she had to put in an engineered stormwater retention facility on her property at the request of the city engineer. So, she provided evidence, code enforcement acknowledgement of her request on December 5th of '22, and again, on December 14th of 2023. So, that's a year apart. She, she indicated... She indicated she did not receive follow-up communication during the 12-month period, and no corrective work was undertaken at the Moon Hut property. However, during the time period, a notice of violation was issued for placing rocks in the drainage swale at 116 within four days. So those, while that year was going on and nothing was happening, she got a notice of violation within four days of placing rocks in her drainage swale. That, that's, that was what she initially presented me with. She indicated that the apparent lack of communication and progress on her complaint regarding Moon Hut for an entire year, combined with the quick action, made her feel, our selective enforcement, that she felt targeted. So that was her initial assertion, and then we began the response. First thing is the clarification notice that her original complaint was on 8/22/22. No disagreement on that. Moving forward, code enforcement staff produced the following documentation of email, and I have them here marked as exhibit A and B, but I didn't include them because she agrees, yeah, that she did get that correspondence. That's not an issue. It's really that nothing had happened for a year out there at the Moon Hut. Regarding the four-day turnaround, I provided a timeline about the first complaint by Cowboy. He was a, I don't think that's his real name, I think that's a nickname, that's what he calls himself, the, he's a neighboring tenant, or he was at the time. He filed a complaint regarding the parking, that there was just, there were parking problems, and that's related to the, the restaurant, and became very successful. A lot of more chairs were put in there, and I guess his customers couldn't park, so he filed a complaint. So on 3/28/22, we sent an original notice of violation to Mr. Reynolds. He's the owner of the property, so Cowboy and Peg are tenants, but Shane Reynolds is the owner. 3/28/22. On 8/322, we sent the first revised notice of violation. On 8/22, Peg filed a complaint about the 7802 parking. On 5/24/23, this is nine months later, Cowboy makes a complaint regarding the rocks in the swale. On 6/12/23, Mrs. Schaller requests the status update regarding the 7802 North Atlantic parking complaint. On 6/16/23, staff created a second revised notice of violation which included the rocks in the swale. On 7/19/23, we sent that revised notice of violation, and 11/2 of '23, the case was closed. So in a follow-up meeting, Mrs. Schaller confirmed that the four-day period she's referencing is regarding the date that she requested an update, which was 6/12, to the date that the NOV was dated 6/16. Can you scroll a little bit, Mia? So that was indeed the four-day period that she was referencing, and I do have a note that the second revised notice of violation was not actually sent until 7/19/23. So Cowboy made the complaint on 5/24. Don't, don't go back a little bit, right there. Cowboy made the complaint on 5/24/23. She requests a status update on 6/12. We create the notice of violation on the 16th, and we send it on the 19th. So there's really, from the start to end of that whole thing, is 5/24 to 7/19. But I understand her perspective, 6/12 to 6/16, looks to her like, hey, I'm just making a request for an update, and four days later, I have a document dated four days later that, you know, you're slamming me for this. So in a follow-up meeting, she, she verified that was the four-day period that she's talking about. She agreed that we had provided the correspondence. However, she's reemphasizing now her original comment that no corrective work had been undertaken at the Moon Hut parking lot. Still, to this day, hasn't. Additionally, Mrs. Schaller stated that she would like to see a timeline of all code enforcement actions, interactions regarding the Moon Hut to verify that similar timeframes were employed to her enforcement experience. So here's the timeline. 2/15/22, we observed, code enforcement observed the parking lot being repaved, spoke to the owner, informed him a permit was required. Owner indicated he would get a permit. No notation was made regarding the previously pervious area. 4/23/22, owner of 7802 Moon Hut, applied for a permit. The application did not include information regarding the previously pervious area. 4/24, the next day, permit application was denied due to it being an owner-builder permit, when you have to have a contractor. Owner builders can only do residential, you can't do owner-builder for commercial. 4/25, we did that. 8/22, Mrs. Schaller met with Mr. Dickey regarding the unpermitted paving work, as well as other requests for investigation. At this time, she communicated to Mr. Dickey about the previously pervious issue. 12/5/22, four months later, Mrs. Schaller requested an email update regarding the parking lot at the Moon Hut. She restated in the email about the previously pervious area. Code enforcement staff responded to Mrs. Schaller via email that the owner was already made aware of the requirement for a permit. Code enforcement staff also informed Mrs. Schaller that the owner's first permit application had been denied, and the reason for its denial. Code enforcement was made aware of the previously pervious issue on 12/5/22 as a result of Mrs. Schaller's email. So at this point, everybody knew about the previously pervious, and we didn't have a permit to address the Moon Hut yet. 3/26/23, as a matter of code enforcement follow-up, they searched the permit database, showed no paving permit had been approved or reapplied for since the application was denied the first time. On the same date, code enforcement staff left a voicemail message for the owner of Moon Hut and reinforcing of the requirement for a permit, and that the scope of the permit would be required to address all work performed. And there's a reason I italicize that, because we're going to go off into a little discussion about why, why code enforcement says all work performed. The previous, previous issue was not specifically called out to the owner. Instead, what was called out was that the scope of the permit would be required to address all work performed. So there's a bolded note here. This has to do with code enforcement practice. The reason the issue of the previously pervious area was not specifically called out with the owner is because the permit's scope is always required to cover all work performed. They have to cover all work performed. We don't want to say, there's this one thing we know about, and then you don't do the other things that we don't know about. You got to cover all work you performed. The contractor is the authorized representative of the owner and is required to follow, excuse me, all applicable codes, including, as in this case, codes related to previously pervious areas. The issuance of a permit does not authorize any violations of code intentionally omitted or not. If a permit omits an item from its scope, that does not relieve the burden to comply with applicable codes regarding that omitted portion of scope. So that's a standard way of approaching this work. It seems their experience is, the more you specify, the more they don't address what you don't specify. And you don't want to, you don't want to cause them to now not address something in a permit because you didn't specifically say it. You just say all work performed. Moving on, 6/12/23, Mrs. Schaller contacted code enforcement staff requesting an update on the paved parking lot and her other requests. Mr. Palmer responded by email that the request was being forwarded to the code enforcement officer. That same day, a second code enforcement search of the permit database, no new permit application had been submitted. Same day, code enforcement staff again contacted the owner about the required permit, and the owner stated his opinion was the work was a patch job that should not require a permit. Code enforcement staff reaffirmed that it is more than that, and that it required a permit application submitted by an appropriately licensed paving contractor. Owner indicated he would comply. Later that day, code enforcement staff received a call from a roofing company asking if they would be able to obtain the paving permit. Code enforcement said, no, the scope of a roofing contractor license does not constitute appropriate licensure for paving. Roofing contractor said, okay, I'll relay this information to the owner. And then moving on to 8/7/23, if you want to scroll, Mia. 8/27, we finally receive a, a permit application. This, this is now the second permit application submitted to Building Department staff. This one's by Sabatino Construction. They are an appropriately licensed paving contractor. Scope of the work that they indicated, wrote, they wrote, "work already completed, asphalt patches, seal coat, and striping." They did not specifically include that a previously pervious area had been paved, paved over, but they were going to address all work completed. 8/9/23, and after the fact, permit was issued because the work was already done, and when we issue it after the fact permit, there's a double penalty fee, you pay double permit fee. But there was no mention of the previously pervious area issue. Building Department staff notified code enforcement staff the permit had been issued. Code enforcement staff did not investigate whether the permit addressed the previously pervious condition, and we talked about that in the note above. 8/9/23, the after, that's the same day it was issued, it received an approved final inspection. Building Department staff did not immediately notify code enforcement staff the permit had received an approved final inspection. So here's my finding number one. Had code enforcement staff been required to review the scope of the permit application for specific items related to code enforcement, the plan review process would likely have been caused to reject the permit application for its failure to address the previously pervious issue. Current building department practice does not include forwarding code enforcement-related building permit applications to code enforcement staff. So it's evident in there where I'm going to be going with my recommendations, that if somebody's applying for a permit to correct, to correct a code enforcement violation, code enforcement needs to be reviewing that permit application to make sure it's going to address everything. That has not been a procedure, so that's why that is a finding. On December 11th, '23, code enforcement was informed that the permit had received an approved final inspection, so that's some four months later.
Pause, if you don't mind, please. So is that, does that complete? I think that's finding number one.
Yes, sir.
Are you now moving on to the next finding?
Yes, well, we're, we're actually continuing in the timeline.
But we're, we're not going to finding number two?
It's not issue number two yet?
We're not there yet.
Yeah, okay.
But finding number two for issue number one is what we're going to now?
We're heading, we're heading towards finding number two.
Okay, can I? And there's finding number one. Can we, can we pause and do a little, and just comment on this one?
Please.
Okay, so on page seven, up towards the middle where it says regarding the, it's top, regarding the four-day turnaround, the following timeline has been created. Ms. Schaller on 6/12 requested an update. And then four days later, the, the revised NOV went out, and we're saying, no, that's not actually. First, it was sent on 7/19.
Yeah, but it was dated 6/16/23.
Okay, and so our finding is that... But it was, yeah, so, so it has the effect, certainly from her correspondence, and she now has the city saying, you know, as of this date, I assume, right? Is that how she would interpret it? I would think that...
She did.
And it's 30 days past. And so the... We're saying, no, it actually wasn't from 6/12 to 6/16. It was from 5/24.
That's when Cowboy made the complaint.
Okay. Cowboy made a complaint. That's the first, I think I heard. How did we verify that Cowboy made a complaint?
Brian or Dave, you want to speak to that?
And what was his complaint regarding rocks in the swale? So we know what his complaint was on 5/24. Well, I guess you're, you're stating that on 5/24, your findings, Mr. City Manager's that the Cowboy makes a complaint, and this came from Officer Palmer?
I spoke with both Mr. Palmer and Code Enforcement Officer Robinson.
Well, I guess, how do we, how did you write down? What was it based on Cowboy makes a complaint? What, what information were you provided is what I'm, to, to show that that's true?
My, Brian, do you want to talk? I don't remember the details of that specific one.
That complaint was filed with Officer Robinson while he was out on site, and he annotated that in his field notes.
It was filed verbally?
Yes.
Okay, so, so when was Officer Robinson on that site visit?
I, I don't have his field notes in front of me, so I don't know when he was out there.
Well, it says that maybe it was on, if that's, I would assume...
It had to have been on 5/24.
Okay, silly question. I would assume as much that, so, and the complaint was about the rocks in the swale? Do we have, was that provided in our, in our actions in the field notes back in January? Or March? Was that provided in the field notes?
I believe all the field notes from this one here were, were provided, yes.
So the, so if I was to verify, we were able to verify that Cowboy made a complaint by going to the field notes on 5/24?
Yes, I believe they are in the field notes of 5/24.
Okay, I'm gonna, I have them. The, the issue, and it was on the gravel? 5/24, conducted a site visit, but unable to confirm living in the garages, unable to reach property owner. That's all the field note says. That's new to me. I haven't seen this 5/24. So where did that, that was not in the field notes? Are these now new information that's going to be added to the field notes? If so, where did that new information?
I don't know. These are the, I saw this and as he was, I was explaining that to the city manager. He asked a question, we pulled up the field notes, and that's where I saw it.
You saw that on, here's the field notes that you provided, or I think code enforcement at large provided. It says, conducted a site visit, but unable to confirm living in garages, unable to reach property. Let me just, and so... Okay, so we don't have any, I don't see any verification of anything happening on 5/24 from the field notes.
Is that from 1/16? Is that the 1/16? Is that the same case? There are numerous cases on this, so I don't know what portion of the field notes that that was in, so I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what you're looking at.
Well, it wasn't related to cases. The, the field notes were related to properties. And so 1/16, 1/18, 1/20 were the properties, and so all cases. And I think that the statement here was that Peg Schaller on 6/12 requested a status update about a parking complaint. We have verification of that. And then four days later, is it, the, the NOV is dated and then sent. And that's her complaint, is I wanted a request, four days later, I'm sent this. And we're saying, no, it wasn't four days later. Cowboy had made a complaint based on field notes that were not, from what I can see, provided in January 24th, 5/24. And so if this is what happened on 5/24 in the field notes, I would assume it would be here. Because, does that make sense? I guess you drafted this report... And in the findings, what did we find to make this statement true? What did we find to make the statement that Cowboy makes a complaint regarding rocks in this whale a true statement?
As Mr. Palmer's indicating, that would have been in the field notes.
Do we have those field notes? Do you?
They're not part of this, they're not part of this report, as you know, Mayor. If you, if you, if counsel would like to see those, we can produce those.
I have them. These are the ones, I mean, we don't need multiple copies, but I have an alter. I'm literally, these are my handwriting from the meeting. This is the actual ones.
Mayor, can I see those real quick, just to see what they are? Thank you.
I mean, if, if, if we need to, we can, we can provide documentation for all comments that are made, that staff is making in here. I, I didn't realize it was going to require that, so we can, we can certainly take a, take a pause. We'd be happy to backfill all of the comments.
No.
Well, then, okay, okay.
No, I, the original ask was for item number one on January 24th. I'm not saying no to, I think you've already, we've been provided that. I wouldn't ask to redo it again. And the goal was to get all actions, all field notes, everything from...
That's not the complete record.
BSNA. And, and so it's really hard for us as a council to make good decisions until we know we have all the information.
Agreed.
And so at that point, that's the information we had. The city manager then goes on an investigation, and now new information comes out that says the 5/24, a complaint was verbally, I guess, filed with Chris. Chris comes back, and I don't see that in the field notes.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, the attachment that you're referring to, attachment four? You just showed us, this, this is the, this is the attachment that the comment is records prior to February 11th, 2022 are not available. And I think we have, have publicly stated that this list that you, is an attachment four that you're referring to is not a complete list. four that you're referring to is not a complete list.
But this event wasn't prior to 2024.
Right.
This was 52423. So I certainly understand why the field notes wouldn't have the, those, you know, the February 22.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd be happy to provide you with that if, if, we, we would be happy to provide you with that, those annotations.
Would those field notes be in BSNA right now?
Yes.
So if I was to log in, you don't need to send me anything.
We can do a timeout and we can go check together if you'd like.
It's new and it, and it certainly softened, I think, the reality of the issue that was brought because from my understanding, on 612 or that gravel, that doesn't make sense to me. Cause that gravel was not even laid at that point. And so June 5th, from my understanding, is when the gravel was installed. So I'm having a hard time understanding how, how their complaint could have came in when it wasn't, when the gravel didn't even exist. So yes, any clarity on that would be helpful. And it's not, I'm not saying every, just anything that jumps out. Our city manager, I think, had to come up with a timeline and a report. City manager, if I understand you, this line item was provided from being verbally told from our senior code enforcement officer.
I also had, have access to BSNA. I can see the records that are there. So I also, if it's there, I'm assuming it's there, as Brian Palmer said, we can go look right now on my computer and it should still be there.
Did you, who wrote this report?
I did.
When you wrote 52423, was that a copy and a paste from something sent to you or did you take notes?
I'm actually typing.
In your verbal, but.
Well, some, some of it also comes from email correspondence too.
Sure, okay. It, at a minimum, it's an error that I think really says, hey, wasn't four days, it was much longer and that one jumped out as a concern. That the gravel, it doesn't make sense to me why on 524, that complaint would come in. And so this is why I questioned, where did that come from? And when I went to the field notes that was provided in March, they're not there. And we were told that's what, that's all the field notes.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, it, it sounds kind of like an attack on, on the staff. They've offered to, to show, go to and take a break, go and show the proof that this is in there on the BSA. So I suggest we let them have that instead of going after the staff. I suggest give them the chance to produce the document.
I'm just asking questions and I think that's fair. I agree. I think they should have time.
And yeah, instead of attacking them, but give them the chance to prove it.
I'm not attacking anyone. I am trying to understand why 52423 was written. When I know that, and the first thing I was told was that field notes, I have the field notes. I've, I've looked at this property on BSNA and I'm saying, this is new information. City manager, can you help me understand? And we just worked through that. I'm not going to sit over here concerned about asking questions that are awkward. We all make mistakes. We all have these issues, but we're not going to get anywhere if we do not accurately confirm the findings. And this is one example here. And so we can take time, that's fine. I don't need that right now. I'm just raising the concern.
Then I suggest we move on.
I agree. So let's go.
Mayor, would you like me to pick up from 61223 where we?
I do, I just want, what page? That's on, is it eight? No, sorry. Yes, page nine is where we left off?
Yeah, actually, we had talked about the finding number one, which ends at the top of page nine.
Yep. I think that's exactly, yep.
Okay. And then next thing was 121123. Code enforcement was informed the permit had received an approved final inspection and this was some four months after it had been approved. Code enforcement staff informed the building department staff that a portion of the parking area was never previously paved when the building permit was obtained and received approved and final inspection. This newly paved area would have required St. John's River Water District review. After receiving another complaint regarding the subject stormwater, staff contacted Kimley Horn, city's engineer, and requested a review of the property for stormwater code requirements. 1214, Kimley Horn and staff met the owner at the site. Kimley Horn recommended the owner contact St. John's for review of the issue of the previously purposed. Over the holidays, 12324, a courtesy letter was sent to the property owner indicating Kimley Horn's recommendation. On 22624, the courtesy letter was returned as unclaimed. 227, the letter was hand delivered to the owner at his office. On 314, having received no information from the owner regarding the recommended St. John's review, a notice of violation was sent to the owner. Three weeks later, the notice of violation had not been delivered. The U.S. Postal Service website indicated the letter is being returned to sender. And on 44, a notice of violation was hand delivered to the property owner. So this next section, and what I've done is more closely looked at Mrs. Schaller's request to see a timeline so we can compare side by side of all code enforcement interactions at 7802 to verify similar timeframes of actions were employed. This is getting to the heart of her question about being treated differently. So this table shows all of the various action items for the two code enforcement. And we can scroll to the next page. They're just summarized from, everything that we saw that we went, gone through, they're just summarized here, just for brevity, so it can be seen in one table. We can scroll to near the bottom of that table, Mia. So good to have you back. On, on the left-hand side, we see that Moon Hut had a total of 21 code enforcement actions and 116 Jackson had a total of nine. Looking at the span of time for those 21 actions, there were 799 days that passed for the Moon Hut and 629 days over here at 116. So we start looking at the average length of time and I don't think this is really bearing useful fruit. So then I'm, I'm looking at just the, the length of time from initial observation to the notice of violation sent. That, that to me becomes a very meaningful metric. And for the Moon Hut, it was 758 days. And for the 116, length of time from initial observation to the original notice of violation sent was only 45 days. So there's a big discrepancy there. 758 versus 45 days. We can scroll a little more. Note, code enforcement strives to process revised notice of violation very quickly. Now, this is the other three things on the right-hand side. Those are the revised ones and that, you know, there's 128 days, 350 days, 174 days. But normally, we try to bring those in very quickly in order to bring an existing violation to the soonest special magistrate hearing. So the time span between the initial inspection and notice of violation should usually be greater than the time span between notice of violation and any revised notice of violation. Also, I should note that during this time, staff is trying to gain voluntary compliance before they issue a notice of violation. So that led me to put in a summary table of departmental time goals. If we can scroll to that one. This is what staff tries to accomplish. And there's eight steps. The first one is we receive a complaint to the date we register the complaint. Our timeframe was we try to get it the same day or within one day. The second step is register the complaint to conduct field visit. We try to hit one day. Third step is conduct field visit to gaining voluntary compliance. And that depends on the violation, how hard it is to fix, how willing the violator is, several other things. And that is usually one to 30 days, could be more. Step four is if you fail to gain voluntary compliance, that's when we send, should be sending a courtesy letter. Now, notice that they're not certified mail. The goal for the courtesy letter is one to 30 days. It's variable depending again on if they're working forward towards compliance. But let's say they don't, the courtesy letter does not make any difference. That's step five. Courtesy letter followed by failure to gain compliance. That's when we force, forward a notice of violation. And the next step, that, right there says varies. So I want to focus on that box right there where it says varies. This to me is an important metric and, and we'll talk more about this as, as we go through our findings. I think we need to get better at filling in this box with a target because that would help this wide discrepancy that we're seeing here between 45 days and 800 days. Moving on, issue six, or step six is what, the difference between gaining, or having a notice of violation sent and gaining compliance. That's five to 30 days. That's Florida statute. Then the code enforcement officer can send the notice of hearing and hold a special magistrate hearing and there's a 10-day minimum notice provision there. And then we get into revised notice of violation. So we'll probably come back to this table as we read through the rest of this. I just wanted to introduce you to those target timeframes.
Thank you.
However, for Mr. Mrs. Schaller's inquiry, a better metric, as we said, would be the comparison of the date of the initial site visit to the date of notice of violation sent for the two properties. City manager's office and code enforcement recently started looking at this metric using data exported from BSNA and that's just within the last two weeks.
City manager, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can I ask a quick question just to make sure I understand this? It's back on, and I'm wanting to make sure so I don't get lost. On page nine, item number one. Okay, that first complaint filed by cowboy on 21122, that's an individual complaint, right?
That's a complaint.
Okay. Then on item number five, cowboy, a tenant makes a complaint regarding rocks in the swell. Is this the same complaint or a new complaint?
It's a new complaint.
Okay, so that's the second one.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're on page nine?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Back to page 11. Okay, that's the target timeframes. And then we talk about, we think, I think a better way to look at this is the difference between the date of the initial site visit and the date of initial notice of violation. We, we're finding that in our preliminary reports that they vary widely, but 90 days kind of tends to be an average. I think we could tighten that up over time, but I'm just looking at what actually has been happening in the newest code enforcement cases in BSNA. It looks like 90 days is kind of the average. So if we apply that 90 days to it and I look at a date of initial site visit, 7802 to date, it's 358, 758 days, that's a 668-day variation from the 90-day average compared to what Peg received was a minus 45 days. So 116 Jackson is less than the average, but it's most, much closer to the average, being only 45 days difference. 7802 is a statistical outlier with a difference of 668 days. That's the bigger number and that to me jumps out. Now, there's possible reasons for this. Prior to the issuance of the original notice of violation, the owner of 116 Jackson specifically requested notice of violation. I said it was the original notice of violation, but Brian corrected me today, it was the revised notice of violation. It wasn't the original one. You sent me an email today that said the owner, Shane Reynolds, requested a notice of violation be forwarded to him?
Yeah, he requested both of the notices of violation.
Both the original and the revised?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that had the effect possibly of speeding up that. And for the property at 7802, from the time that code enforcement informed the owner that a permit was required to the time the permit was issued was 540 days. There's the bulk of it. And then from the time the permit achieved approved final inspection until code enforcement was informed the permit had received that inspection was 124 days. That's the bulk of the 758 days. We can continue? So this leads me to my finding number two. The owner at 7802 was afforded an excessive amount of time between the date of the initial site visit and the date of the original notice of violation. A tool for the evaluation of such timeframes has not historically been employed. Applying this metric in this investigation has been a useful tool to detect this anomaly. And I conclude that statistical anomalies can cause confusion and perceptions of selective enforcement. Developing and using a monitoring tool is critical going forward. So the report that we're doing will be my recommendation to get this report right. So I know that not every code enforcement case is the same. Violations are widely different. Applicate, I'm sorry, owners are completely different attitudes and perceptions and willingness. So not every case can be viewed the same. But if I have a report that says, hey, something's been sitting out here for 700 days and no notice of violation, I'm going to look at that and say, why? Give me the story. And now, now I've got a tool to look into that can help tighten up these timeframes. We didn't have that, I never had that tool before, but we're developing it now. So that's my finding number two, that the, the anomaly, I think, has created this perception that there's selective code enforcement. And we can tighten that up.
I have a question, though, in regards to what I was talking about. Because it looks to me, and help me understand if I'm wrong, but it appears to me that 7802 had all of this time to, before we got to where we got a resolution on it, right?
Right.
But 116 Jackson literally had one that was filed in February of 2022. When did that one get?
The first one, original notice of violation was 45 days later.
Okay. When did it get resolved? Since, I'm looking at, I feel like I'm looking at an apple versus an orange because one side is one complaint, which is the parking lot, and that's 7802. And the other one at 116, I've got two different types of complaints, or two different complaints.
Yep, that's a good point. Because what happens when a, a new information comes to light that changes or adds to or deducts from the violation, code enforcement has to revise the notice. So in this case, it was revised, it started off being about parking, parking spaces and bathrooms. And then it was revised just to add it, Peg Schaller as a respondent. Then city council removed or put a stay on all parking enforcement for restaurants. So it was revised for that reason and sent out again Peg Schaller as respondent. So those, that one notice was revised twice.
Yes, but then we have the second one that comes in that's for a totally different issue.
Yep.
And if we were really doing a side-by-side comparison for your metrics, I would think we would want to look at a complaint versus a complaint, not a complaint versus two complaints.
We'll have that information too. Yes, we will have that. The revised dates and timelines, absolutely. That will be, I didn't mean to say they won't be that. That information won't be available.
It just, it just feels like this is not really, I'm not getting a, a good solid picture of that because I'm comparing one address with two complaints and one address with one complaint.
We need to have a tool that looks at all of that and we're developing that tool. I, I focused on the date of visit to original notice of violation because it revealed the statistical anomaly is so wide. So for purposes of Mrs. Schaller's complaint in my investigation, that's where I zeroed in on. But it doesn't mean that's the only thing we'll be looking at in these reports. If we can move on, that was finding number two. And that ends issue number two, issue number one.
And the page numbers is helpful because there's a few finding twos, but I think just to stay on track, we are now moving to what page?
We're on page 12, moving to issue two, which is near the top.
Okay, page 12, issue two, thank you.
Issue two was a claim that code enforcement department had produced inaccurate and incorrect public information. Mrs. Schaller provided, reported to me that the March 24th council agenda item, which was titled update to the January 24th special meeting, contained inaccurate and incorrect public information. Specifically, the item included a table with the following information. On the left, you see it's a table called item and on the right is table, box called status. This is from the update item. City council request is shown in the box labeled item above and it's a request for a report showing all actions and correspondence related to the properties. The box labeled status indicates that attachment four includes an update for the requested enforcement activity report. But when you go to attachment four, it's But when you go to attachment four, it says records prior to February eleventh, twenty-twenty-two are not available. So if you can scroll just a little bit, Mia. As evidenced, Mrs. Schaller produced untitled documentation from code enforcement department, which includes a timeline of activity from March seventeenth to January ninth, I think these are the field notes, that disproved the assertion that records prior to twenty-two are not available. So obviously, that was a misstatement. So the response in my investigation, first, I want to clarify that the date of the council meeting was March nineteenth. Mr. Dickey stated to me that he unintentionally misrepresented city council's inquiry to Brian Palmer, instead asking Brian for all correspondence located in BSNA. Mr. Palmer stated that at the three nineteen twenty-four council meeting that these older records reside in Laserfish and are available. So that was just a bad response because certainly those records did exist and that was not the proper response. In a follow-up meeting, Mrs. Schaller stated that her perception was that staff had purposefully omitted or decided not to include these records in response to city's council's request. Because if they would have been included, they would have revealed that there remained previous violations which were never corrected. Mrs. Schaller stated that, speaking, going back in time, there were violations left uncorrected from twenty-seventeen and eighteen, this is before her time even in the city, that there were permits applied for and not completed, that there was one permit that was completed, and some of the permitted work she had done, which dealt with those outstanding code enforcement items. So below is a timeline summary of code enforcement actions, permits issued from August eighth, twenty-seventeen to September tenth, twenty-nineteen. In this timeline, this was collaboratively put together, me working with with staff and also with PEG. So in four-six seventeen, this is going back many years, there was an original notice of violation issued. This was when it was Dottie's Bar was there. Eight twenty-seven eighteen, the notice of violation was revised, yeah, issued, revised one.
City manager, I just want to emphasize for clarity, yes, it was Dottie Bar's, but it was the same owner.
The same owner, yes, sir.
Okay, so tenant, Dottie's Bar, same owner, and then another tenant. And those notice of violations were sent to that owner?
They would have, they would have been sent to the owner. Brian, you can verify that.
On the seventeenth?
On, on.
Yes, I believe so. They were sent to the owner, all the notices go to the owner also.
Then on nine nineteen eighteen, the notice of violation was presented to the code board and it was tabled until the next meeting. For various reasons, the board didn't have any more meetings until one twenty-four nineteen, and the code enforcement at that point did not hear it because at that time, the owner was in the process of obtaining permits. So the case was not presented to the code enforcement board. In March of twenty-nineteen, Dottie's Bar closes. April of twenty-nineteen to December of twenty-nineteen, Mrs. Schaller was remodeling the tenant space. So right after Dottie's Bar closed, within a month, PEG's out there working to fix this space up. In December of twenty-nineteen, Ellie Mays opens. So here are those violations that go back to twenty-seventeen. We're going to talk about all of them roughly in chronological order and what ended up happening with all of them. The first one was repair, replace all improperly installed electrical equipment, correct and eliminate electrical hazards, and provide GFCIs. On eight twenty-five seventeen, a permit was issued and it did get a final inspection. Those violations were found in compliance. I just want to note that an additional electrical permit was issued in twenty-nineteen. This was when PEG had the place for some expansions to the electrical system.
City manager, quick question. How do we determine, what is the language? We got final, closed, when a permit has been satisfied, is it final?
Yes.
Okay, if you're, as you're going through this, when you, when we use words, do we differentiate? Like final inspections, the one you're on?
Yes.
Does that mean, when you say fine, permit received, approved, final inspections, are we saying that that permit was finalized and closed out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it.
The next one was repair, replace roof, flashing gutters and downspouts. That was a permit issued on December eleventh of twenty-seventeen, and that received all approved final inspections and the violation was found in compliance. Then there was an issue about affixing a currently valid license tag registered to the utility trailer. Obviously, this didn't require a permit, but the trailer was removed. Then remove all dead plants, refuse and debris, again, no permit. But in nine twenty-nine, twenty-eighteen, the property is found in compliance with that. Then the next one is protect all exterior surface from ailments indicated by painting or other covering. Nine twenty-eighteen, that property was painted, found in compliance. Next one, in accordance with city code, maintain the exterior in a clean, sanitary, safe condition, good repair, clear it of nuisances, liver, rubbish, debris, objects, et cetera, which may create a health or fire hazard. Fences maintained not constitute a blighting deteriorate affect neighborhood. Nine twenty-eighteen, the property was found to be in compliance for that one. Maintain the premises free of filth, garbage, trash, refuse debris and operative machinery, and clean up pet excretions from parts of the premises which are accessible to and used by persons. Nine twenty-eighteen, that was found in compliance. Affix numbers indicating the official numbers for each building, for each front entrance, clearly visible. Eleven ten eighteen, that was found in compliance. Repair, replace every window and door frame not in sound condition, good repair. Twelve four eighteen, there was an original permit issued, but it expired six months later.
City manager?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
When you're saying, we're rolling through these quicks, so when backing up to nine twenty, it says maintain the premise, I'm sorry, affix numbers indicating the official numbers for each principal building, front entrance, clearly visible, sorry, the next one. Just below, the second bullet from the bottom, repair, replace every window and door frame.
Which are not in sound condition.
Good repair and weather tight in accordance with IPMC. The twelve four. Okay, that's, that's not eleven ten, I'm sorry, my eyes jumped on the bullet. So we're saying on twelve four, the original permit's issued?
Yeah, but it expired without an approved final inspection on six-two twenty-nineteen.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Later, this is after twenty-nineteen, so this is after Mrs. Schaller's involved. Nine ten twenty-nineteen, the permit was again issued and it received approved final inspections and this violation was found in compliance. So you see, this is where PEG is now involved and starting to take care of things also. Next one was provide safe electrical wiring and devices on the premises in accordance with IPMC, we can scroll. Six twenty-six nineteen, that permit was issued, it received approved final inspections and the violation was found in compliance. Next, again, we had repair the buildings, electrical, mechanical and plumbing systems which are unsafe, unsanitary, do not provide adequate egress or constitute a fire hazard or otherwise dangerous to human life. On six twenty-six nineteen, a permit was issued, received final inspections, was found in compliance, and a related permit on seven eleven twenty-nineteen was issued, received final inspections, violation found in compliance. Next one was repair, replace every leaking or defective plumbing sewer line in accordance. Seven eleven nineteen, permit was issued, it was received approved final inspections, violation was found in compliance. Pave and properly mark all vehicular use areas in accordance with city code. Seven twenty-five nineteen, permit issued, received approved final inspection, found in compliance. Provide correct number of parking places in accordance with city code. This was not addressed by permit because it was considered no longer be a violation once Dottie's closed and subsequently, city council approved an ordinance requiring no minimum parking permits for restaurants. So that corrected that. Repair, replace all exterior doors, door assemblies and hardware. Nine ten twenty-nineteen, permit issued, received approved final inspection, that's found in compliance. Repair, replace all interior surfaces, including windows and doors, not in good, clean, sanitary condition. No permit was required, the premises had subsequently closed, new tenant corrected this. So my finding here is that one permit had expired, was subsequently achieved, issued and achieved a final completed inspection. So all of the above violations have been cured and the case was found in compliance. So it was just a bad statement to say that there's no history prior to twenty-twenty-two. Obviously, there's a lot of history prior to twenty-two, and that was available. It just was a misstatement.
Okay, so in twenty-eighteen, well, twenty-seventeen, the original notice of violation was issued.
Yes, sir.
This is prior, this was issued to the property owner. And was this related to one twenty, one, it wasn't just one sixteen, which I think Dottie's Bar occupied at the time, but it was related to, or was it just? Did it relate to one eighteen as well or one twenty, if we remember?
Mrs. Schaller's request was that there was a lot of history of violations on the premises.
Yes.
And we're just looking at all of them.
So, okay. And then so four-six seventeen, the first, and then a year goes by, four-six eighteen, and four months before a revised is issued.
Correct.
And that revision, the change, if I remember from researching, was because there was folks living or seen to be living.
It added a few things.
Maybe there was more, I just remember that was a difference to trigger the revision.
Yeah, revised notice of violation because it added things.
And so the finding is, is that nothing happened in between that year and four months from the original?
Yeah, our first permit issued was August twenty-fifth of twenty-seventeen, so two days before the revised notice of violation.
The first permit was August fifth, twenty-seventeen?
August twenty-fifth.
Twenty-seventeen?
Yes, sir.
Well, that, but the.
Could scroll a little more, Mia.
Okay.
Right here, August twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen.
And then the revised NOV goes out?
Two days later.
August twenty-seventh. Okay, and so at that point, I think we had the, I went back and had the old audio and listened to that meeting. The September nineteenth, twenty-eighteen. The NOV was presented to the CEB, the next meeting.
Tabled, yeah.
It was, but they discussed it and Mr. Reynolds presented and Robinson and all this staff. And those minutes, I think, say that they wanted to bring it back and here and he was trying to get some things handled in front of the code enforcement board. January, or twenty-nineteen comes and it's saying there was a meeting, however, the owner was in the process of obtaining permits and the case was not presented to the CEB. the board wanted, I think, compliance and we were saying we never brought it back to the board. I guess the issue is there's these open notice of violations, but if the board never had another say in that. And then I think we went to the magistrate system shortly after. Okay, I'm following.
So Mrs. Schaller's statement that there currently are violations uncorrected from twenty-seven eighteen, my investigation did not produce that fact. It appeared to all have been addressed from twenty-seventeen and eighteen. She did say that there were, there was permits applied for, not completed, yep, there was one that I found. There was one permit that was completed, there was more than one, actually. And indeed, some of the work permitted was work that she had done to deal with some of those outs. So she closed the loop on a lot of these too.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions on this one?
I just wanted to ask a question about the timeline summary at the very top of page thirteen. Four-six seventeen, eight twenty-seven eighteen? Is the revision?
Yes, sir.
So over, over a year later.
Yes, sir.
There was a revision.
And no record of that going to the code enforcement board after, between four-six seventeen and eight twenty-seven eighteen. And again, that's one of those metrics that the new reporting should catch. And that's certainly a question I would ask because if here I am a year later after notice of violation was issued and hasn't gone to code enforcement board, I'm going to ask why.
Okay.
And so basically, all the issues cited in the NOV that began in four-six seventeen, I have it here, I'm looking at the old, we're saying all of those were brought into compliance through each line by line, but the board never had a chance to know that, that our process is that the code enforcement officer saw that, well, it says permits were being obtained.
Yes.
At the time, but then they did end up coming into compliance?
They started checking them off, clicking them off over time, and then PEG finished it and brought it home.
Counsel, anything else on that one? We are on page.
Fifteen is the next page, mayor. We're ready to move on to issue three.
Counsel, want to move on? Thank you, you said fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, here was my, I was looking for another one. It says on page fourteen, all of the above violations have been cured and in compliance, that's the finding.
Yes, sir.
And we know this because of how? I mean, how did you verify all of, that all of this is in compliance? Because I think we all see this building. And when you read twenty-seventeen eighteen, you can understand, today we see it. Was there any subsequent inspections?
There wouldn't have been a compliance inspection for all of these, Brian, you would do those for all of them.
For what?
I'm sorry, we're referring to.
How were we able to make the statement that one permit expired, but subsequently achieved, completed? All of the above violations have been cured and the case was found in violation? How do we know that all the above violations have been cured?
Because each one of them, we reviewed each one, each violation, and for each one, a permit was issued and had received an approved final inspection. Or in the case of the trailer, the trailer was removed. In the case of dead plants, refuse and debris, they were removed, no permit, in other words. So the things that didn't require a permit got done and the things that did require a permit did get done also. And that the dates of the permits and the dates of the approved final inspections, I'm sorry, the dates of the permits are there. And each one of them received an approved final inspection.
Okay, and that applied to all of the properties, one sixteen, one eighteen, one twelve?
That's the whole record that I asked Brian Palmer to bring me everything he's got, for anything he's got on one twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen Jackson.
So there was an issue about railings. And I think those, that's, those railings were not ever replaced.
This, this report is about August eighth, twenty-seventeen through September tenth, twenty-nineteen. Any violations that happen after September tenth, twenty-nineteen are not going to be in this timeline. This was about going back into that timeline only.
But I, was there an issue with railings?
The railings came up subsequent to twenty-nineteen, Brian, am I correct about that?
I believe so.
That would be part of the, everything, the twenty-twenty-two oh one-five case?
I believe so. I would have to look, I don't know that off the top of my head of when it was.
So we go in, we go into BSNA to verify that the permits were finalized and then if permits were filed, finalized, that means that an inspection was done on all the addresses. Meanwhile, PEG's coming in and she sees these issues.
She starts fixing the record?
Look to be the same that existed.
She didn't, she probably wasn't aware that some had already been corrected before she got there.
Well, I don't think she was questioning all of the issues that exist in seventeen eighteen. She pointed out issues that, such as issues with people being in the building and stuff, from my understanding. Like, there's no, those issues existed. I guess my exercise is to understand how we determine that compliance was attained. Because when I visually see, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me how we concluded on that particular building that all of those violations from the twenty-eighteen on that particular building, that all of those violations from the 2018 disappearing that went out, all the way down the line, were completed.
Which violations have you witnessed, sir, that still appear to be violations?
Well, I mean, certainly... The record should show the complaints of Ms. Schaller, but certainly after the fire, right?
That...yeah, that...
And I know we're going to get to that.
That's after 2019, though.
But in the meantime... Okay. Let's move on to that.
Okay. Now, this is just a snapshot from 2017 to 2019. Things definitely happened after that, too. If we're ready, we can move on to number three, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this one is a claim that Code Enforcement Department records received do not match Code Enforcement records now available. So, Mrs. Schaller reported to me that records received don't match records available. She produced printed documents of four notices of violations, all related to that case 22-015. And each one of them is listed there, 32822, 616, 61687, and they have different information. The third one has a different respondent than the other three, but they all say certified mailing numbers ending with number 9447. You see that for all four of them. She asks, "How can one certified mailing number apply to all four different letters?" Additionally, she produced a photograph of the cover page of a notice of violation for the same case, 32822, addressed to respondent Peggy Schaller, and indicating that she can't find...cannot find the remainder of the document, but she believed that it likely had the same certified mailing number. I think that's kind of irrelevant at this point, because the response will handle all that. Number three, response, "Each of the official record copies were sent by certified mail, and a copy of each official record copy is to be retained, accompanied by a receipt of such unique certified mailing number. The reason that 9447 was reflected in the documents submitted to the city manager by Ms. Schaller was because these were not official record copies. These documents referenced incorrect certified mail numbers because these documents were from unofficial working draft versions. Working draft versions are subject to copying, editing, pasting, saving over, et cetera. This was an artifact from a previous copy and paste and save over. So, the question is, why did Mrs. Schaller possess unofficial working draft versions? Unofficial working draft versions are generated in a template in BSNA, which has been set up for staff to use in the system. Staff's view of BSNA allows these templates to be viewed and edited. The BSNA platform has a feature to make file viewable to public. This is via a toggle to switch on public view or switch off public view for each document. In recent months, Code Enforcement staff was directed to make all documents for 116 Jackson Avenue viewable to the public on the BSNA platform. As a result, these unofficial working draft versions of the notices of violations were switched on to be made viewable to the public. However, over time, it was discovered that these working draft templates could not be opened via the public portal. When an attempt to open them was made on the public portal, these files would download as unopenable zip files. This is not helpful, and these documents are now being switched off to public view. This problem doesn't occur with PDF files or JPEGs. Because she couldn't view these documents, Mrs. Schaller contacted Mrs. Palmer and stated that she couldn't open them, she requested Mr. Palmer provide these records. Now, remember, these were unofficial working draft templates. She was not instructed at the time that these records would be unofficial draft working documents. Had she been so instructed, this confusion would not have existed. Consequently, the documents provided to Mrs. Schaller and fulfillment of her request were not official records. Code Enforcement staff was trained by BSNA that users had the option to save draft documents in BSNA and revise them as needed. From the time Code Enforcement staff began using BSNA until approximately April 23, working draft documents were routinely edited and saved over in BSNA. These were unofficial working versions existing on BSNA, which are different from the official record copies. These unofficial working versions were provided to Mrs. Schaller in response to her request. Was Mr. Palmer aware that the documents he provided to Mrs. Schaller were unofficial working draft documents? No, why not? Because he didn't review the documents prior to sending them, and the documents that were requested were public record. Indeed, they were, and were forwarded to her due to her request. For this property, the official record documents bearing the Code Enforcement Officer's signature and including the certified mailing receipt were uploaded to BSNA just last month on 41624, and they are now viewable as PDFs. Why did these not get uploaded until 41624? Mr. Palmer stated to me that he had been looking at untitled...looking at the titled files in BSNA, which appeared to match the titled file names of the official record documents. Why was it addressed at this time, or how was it discovered? In the course of this investigation on 41624, I noted that the documents on BSNA did not bear the Code Enforcement Officer's signature. I relayed this to Mr. Palmer. At this point, Mr. Palmer understood the nature of the problem and made the proper documents available to the public to view on BSNA, and made the unhelpful working draft documents not visible to public view. This practice of creating unofficial working versions on BSNA has since been discontinued. Code Enforcement staff has been directed to remove such documents from public view across the platform. All open cases have been completed. Currently, staff is working on the closed cases. When this effort is complete, no working draft documents will be viewable to the public via BSNA, and there will be official record copies in PDF. To clarify, an official record document on BSNA will be a PDF, it will bear the officer's signature, and a scan of the green mail certified receipt when available. So, people can still request public records for working draft, it's still a public record if you want it. The problem is, it needs to be notated that it's a draft document, so there's no confusion. So, all of those templates need to be revised to be draft, so this won't happen again. So, here's my finding. When a public records request for working draft documents is fulfilled, confusion can be created as to what is or is not an official record document when such draft document is not marked as draft. I did some additional investigative research, because it goes a little deeper than this, Mayor, unless we want to pause and ask anything about finding number one?
Counsel? We're on page 16.
Yes, sir.
Finding... Any questions, or...thank you.
Okay, moving on. "The original notice of violation official record addressed parking spaces and bathrooms. It was sent on 32822 to Mr. Reynolds as the owner. The official record with corresponding certified mail receipt ending in 9294 were uploaded to BSNA on 41624." However, the working copy version of the documents which reside in BSNA contained a copy and paste artifact on the last page, indicating certified mailing number, that famous 9447 number that was repeated. The original notice of violation was then revised. The purpose of the revision, approximately five months had passed with no progress initiated by the property owner. In an effort to compel corrective efforts, the Code Enforcement Officer indicated that he revised the original notice of violation as follows. The document now included the word revised. One copy was printed and prepared for mailing to Mr. Reynolds. It is unknown who was the named respondent, because we don't have a copy of that. The working draft document was revised to name Mrs. Schaller as respondent and prepared for mailing to Mrs. Schaller. The violations remain the same as the original notice of violation. Both documents were sent via certified mail on 8422. Mr. Reynolds was mailed with certified mail ending with 9430. Mrs. Schaller's certified mailing ending in 9447. Official record copies were not made of these revised documents, but certified mail receipts were kept. These certified mail receipts were uploaded to BSNA on 41624. Mrs. Schaller has indeed produced a copy of her received document. Finding number one, this is actually finding number two for this, that's a typo. "Revising a notice of violation with a different respondent name is a significant change of status that warrants retaining a copy. Official record copies were not made of the first revised notice of violations, and this violates departmental practice." Finding number two, although copies were not made of the original revised notice of violations, it's possible that similar notice of violations were sent to separate singular respondent parties. If this is accurate, it would confuse the record. In the case where there are multiple respondents, departmental policy should be that all should be indicated on the notice of violation. Departmental policies has been to have a singular respondent. There is no departmental policy regarding whether or not it is appropriate to notice separate singular respondent parties. So, I know that's a little confusing as a statement, but the way I can explain it is, it appears that this original notice of violation was revised, and one of them was definitely sent to Mrs. Schaller, and she was the only named respondent. The other one may very well have had only Shane Reynolds as the only respondent. And that's confusing, that one case would go separately to two different people. It seems a better practice to just put both of them on one, and they both get a copy of that. So, that's a finding of mine that we need to address. "The notice of violation was again revised to remove the violation regarding the parking spaces because city council had placed a stay on all code enforcement related to parking spaces at restaurants. This second revised notice of violation was also in two parts. Part one identified Ms. Schaller as the respondent. It had the bathrooms, the filling of the retention area. It was a CC copy to Mr. Reynolds, dated 61623, actually mailed on 71923. We have the record copy of this, as well as the certified mail receipt ending in 8072. It was returned as unsigned for. It contains an error on the signature page, indicating the number should have been 9447, that was just an error. Part two identified Mrs. Schaller as a respondent and addressed bathrooms and the filling of the retention area, same thing. Notice was mailed to Ms. Schaller and is dated 616, actually, again, mailed on 71923. We have the record copy. Mail receipt ending in 8089, contains that same error on the page, indicating it ends in 9447." So, that leads to my final finding here, which should be labeled finding number four. "The second revised notice of violation only named Mrs. Schaller as the respondent. It did not name the owner as respondent. This violates departmental practice." I note, there was a third revised notice that was created. It was dated 8723, but it was never issued. It also addressed the retention area and plumbing fixtures. It was created but never signed, and it was never mailed. It is a working draft, and is not an official record copy. It contains an error in the title. It references second revised notice of violation, but should have been titled third. It also contains an error on the last page, ending certified mailing number 9447. No certified mailing number because it was never mailed. I only mention this because it was in BSNA, as switched on visible to the public, but when Ms. Schaller tried to download it, it was a zip file, and she requested it for her public records request, just acknowledging that a draft existed of that that was never issued. And that ends issue number three, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, for Tim?
Let me... The notice was mailed to Mr. Reynolds. I'm looking at this second revised notice of violation. It was dated 61623, but it was actually mailed 71923. Why is there that gap between the date?
Want to address that, Brian?
Yes, I can answer that. I wasn't here, I had a family emergency, so I left, and I asked the notice of violation not to be sent. The date actually should have been changed to 719 on the letter itself. It had already been put in an envelope, I would imagine, and everything was already put on it, and he just sent it when I got back.
And I think that's an important observation, because when somebody gets a notice of violation, it starts a ticking of a time clock. And if you don't even get it till 30 days after, your clock may be expired before you even open it. And I think that's...that needs to be another finding in this report, and I've already noted that.
And why? Because family emergencies come up, but why would you not want to send the letter and have her have the time to respond?
The Florida statute actually states that the violator once notified has that time by the...when they sign for the notice. It doesn't go by the date that the letter is dated, or when it's sent through the mail. It actually starts when they actually sign for the letter. So, whatever the green card, that's why we do the certified...whenever the green card is signed for, that's actually when the date starts, or the timeframe, I should say.
But if I was a violator, and I received that, I wouldn't know that.
I'm not going to...I'm not going to make any statements that are untrue. I'll look at our notices. I believe it may be stated in the notice, but Anthony is the one who did the actual notices and the legal on there. He may know that offhand. I don't, but I can more than happy look that up for you.
That'd be something nice to add to the notices, if it's not already there, that the clock starts when you receive this.
Well, I think you're talking about a clock that's defined in Florida statute, right? Back to your table that you created, when the NOV, 162? And...okay. And so, the date the notice of violation is sent, they need to pursue a hearing to get compliance. State law says that you can't just demand a hearing on most things, I guess, but they need notice within at least 30 days. You and I were working through that today, and so that's the notice of violation.
Violation.
And I think it does say from the receipt, and that's why the certified mail is so important.
Yeah.
So, the date of the letter really doesn't...
It's bad customer service.
...matter as much as from the date they receive, right, to if you choose to pursue a hearing? Okay. I understand.
And with that, issue number three, I'm done, unless there's any other questions, Mayor?
Counsel? We're on page...just staying on 17, I guess we just got through...
We're going to four, which is on page 18.
Okay. Counsel, good to go on?
All right, issue four. "This is a claim that Code Enforcement Department made an untrue statement at the March 24 Council Meeting. We only send notices to the property owner. Ms. Schaller reported to me that records disprove this assertion. See item above, that claim that Code Enforcement Department deceptively manipulated or altered it to cover up mistakes. This item indicates notices to both property owner and the tenant. So, this...we learned a lot since then. Number four, response, "In a follow-up meeting, Mrs. Schaller was presented the transcript below and confirmed that the statement was made at the January 24, 24 Council Meeting. This special meeting included a statement from Mr. Palmer on this topic. The transcript is from below, it's from the YouTube video. It does contain YouTube mistakes, as sometimes happens, that I did not correct." So, going to the fourth line down, well, let's just read the whole thing. Starts at the top. Are you finished for now, Councilmember Davis?
Just wanted to make sure everyone understands what you just said, because you know, this is a YouTube transcript, right?
Yes.
And there are mistakes that we found, which one of them was, it says shower, and I believe it should have said shower.
To Mrs. Schaller.
We have not obtained a verified script by listening from 104 to 105. But generally...
This is generally correct, it's just got warts and all from YouTube's translation.
Okay, that's...I just want to say, that's really important, right, that we have the right words?
Yes, sir.
And so...
Okay, and the mayor's talking, or Dawn's talking, I guess, it says, "Are you finished for now, Councilmember Davis? Okay, Councilmember Willis, I have one quick question for Dave." This is Councilmember Willis speaking. "How do you differentiate on a notice of violation between the renter, occupant, and their property owner? Because it seems some of these notices of violations that went to the shower, but I think it's supposed to be Ms. Schaller, should have gone to the property owner. Can I answer that? This is Brian Palmer speaking. The notice of violation actually does go to the property owner. We courtesy copied the tenant, so we send a courtesy copy to the tenant to make sure that they're aware of the violation that's on the property. But the notice of violation does go to the property owner, and the reason why we send the notice of the violation...of violation of the property owner," I think it means to the property owner, "not because it's, you know, it's also in Florida statute that tells us how to do that. However, we send the notice to the property owner because the property owner is ultimately responsible. If the magistrate decides to place a lien on the property, the tenant's not affected, but the property owner is, so that's why we always send the notice to the property owner. The transcript does not include the phrase, 'We only send notices to the property owner.' However, it does include the phrase, 'We always send the notice to the property owner.' Mrs. Schaller was named as respondent on the first revised notice of violation, as well as the second. Because the property owner had not made any progress toward compliance, and we're trying to identify another way to fix this, this was done in an alternate attempt to compel compliance, and Mr. Reynolds was CC'd on Mrs. Schaller's correspondence. In a follow-up meeting with Mrs. Schaller, after reviewing the transcript, she agreed that there is no evidence of the use of the word 'only.'" In a follow-up meeting with Mrs. Schaller, after reviewing the transcript, she agreed that there is no evidence of the use of the word "only." However, she claims that the language that was used implied that tenants are never named as respondents, while she has direct knowledge that she had been named a respondent. She stated that the dubious quality of this statement supports her perception that code enforcement staff members make untrue statements publicly. Staff has later clarified that there was no intent to imply that tenants are never named as respondents. Staff's statement was, "We courtesy copied the tenant." This was not qualified with the adjective "always" or "only," or any other frequency-related adjective. Omitting a qualifying adjective regarding frequency can leave the statement open to interpretation. In a follow-up clarification, Mr. Palmer stated that department practice is that the code enforcement officer has the option to courtesy copy the tenant, if deemed appropriate. Because the statement can possibly be viewed as never naming the tenant as respondent, Mr. Palmer later clarified that department practice is that the code enforcement officer has the option to name the tenant as respondent, if deemed appropriate. So my finding is, there was no untrue statement made. However, in the absence of written departmental policy, oral statements can introduce scrutiny and differing interpretations of intent. There is no departmental policy defining when it is appropriate to courtesy copy a tenant, and when it is appropriate to name the tenant as respondent. Having such a policy would have made Mr. Palmer's response more conclusive. Now, I did have an opportunity to meet with the mayor this afternoon about my finding that there was no untrue statement made. And in that regard, the mayor and I discussed the last line of the transcript, Mia. If you could scroll back just a little bit. Last line, it says, "affected, but the property owner is, so that's why we always send the notice to the property owner." To that point, the mayor and I discussed. Mr. Palmer says, "We always send the notice to the property owner." How is it that the first and second revised notice of violation only went to Mrs. Schaller as respondent? That would make that an untrue statement. Mr. Palmer clarified this evening to me during the break that a CC went to Mr. Reynolds. So when he says, "We always send them to," we always send the notice to the property owner, he's clarifying that they may not be the named respondent, but they get a courtesy copy at least.
Okay, so we're saying that this, to this statement, finding there was no untrue statements made.
Still appears to be accurate.
You stand by that statement?
Yeah, because these records were CC'd to Mr. Owner Shane Reynolds.
There was never a time when Ms. Schaller received a notice of violation and the property owner received nothing?
No, sir. The property owner received every letter.
Every time?
Unless he refused it.
Yes, unless I got it back in the mail, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I have a hard time with that, but I think that Councilmember Willis, who certainly can speak for his own intent, and the way I understood his question, is he's saying, he really broke into two parts. He said, "Dave, how do you differentiate on a notice of violation between the document and the property owner?" That's kind of a general question. And he explains why he's asking that, because it seems some of these notices of the violation went to the Schaller, it says shower, but I believe it says Ms. Schaller, probably, that went to me. Ms. Schaller should have gone to the property owner. So he's specifically saying and acknowledging that Ms. Schaller received the violation, and the property owner did not receive. And we're saying, we did send it to the property owner. We courtesy copied the tenant. In that case, that's not true. We did not copy the tenant.
Right.
We sent it to Ms. Schaller, and we copied the landlord.
Yes, sir.
So I can't, that's just not, that's why I say, that's not, from my understanding, what happened. And so we send a courtesy copy to the tenant. What we're saying is that, no, you flip it, basically. That's what happened, is it went tenant, copy landlord. And then, so that's why we always notice, send the notice to the property owner. Okay, Councilmember Willis, anybody want to speak on that, or hopefully I didn't?
Well, the original intent of the question was in reference to the public records comments, or documents that Ms. Schaller had received that had the wrong certified mail numbers on them. And that was the reason I asked the question, because they were clearly, the draft documents were clearly addressed to her. And I was just trying to find out where that, how that could be. Because I did not know that that was part of just a public records request at the time.
Any other comments?
I just want to reiterate that recommendations are forthcoming for all of these items. On this one, it's definitely obvious to me that I'm going to have the city clerk involved in understanding the processes regarding official records and public records. What's visible to public, what, how documents are distributed by a public records request, with the safeguards of, this is just a draft, unless it is an actual notice of violation with the signature on it. We need to put important, appropriate safeguards in place to make sure we do not ever have to repeat this again. This has been a big learning lesson for us.
Thank you. Anything else on this one? I think we're moving on to the next.
Item five, issue five, do you want to continue, or take a break, Mayor? You want to forge on ahead?
Well, let's do this. Let's see how much we have. So we're on page 19.
Twenty, just turn to 20.
Page 20, issue five. One, two, three, it's really not a full page. I'm just seeing, four, five, six, seven. There's seven more pages. Want a quick break? I think that would be very helpful with seven pages left. We'll reconvene. What do we need? Five, 10? It's eight 28? And just as a matter of, okay, let's take five. We'll reconvene. Ready to go? Ready? Okay, we are at 8:38 PM. We'll get started here in about 10 seconds. All right, it is 8:38 PM. We're reconvening, call the meeting back to order for our special council meeting. I believe City Manager was about to move on to the next issue, number five, found on page 20. City Manager? Yes, Councilmember Davis, pardon.
I was going to say, we normally, four hours of meetings, and we have to make a motion to continue, because it's been four hours. Or can we, can we go on, or is there no set date or time?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock is still on this one?
I don't know if it's a four hour, but if it is, I would agree. I think it's.
Yeah, I just wanted to bear in mind.
Okay, I'll continue while he's researching that. Issue five is claim that false information was recorded into the public record and distributed. Schaller provided me with three photographs, with written descriptions. Take the photographs with me if anybody wants to see them. Lisa? Sorry, issue five, claim that false information was recorded into the public record and distributed. Mrs. Schaller provided me with three photographs. I do have them here. If anybody wants to see them, I can pass them down. Photograph one shows an exterior area and an interior area in the background. The following contents are in order from foreground to background. Outside, there's the rusted frame of a bench swing, a washing machine, a refrigerator, and caution tape covering an open garage door. Inside the garage door, there are buckets, a dryer, a stack of lumber, a metal table, and unidentifiable sundries. The written description printed on this picture says, "Picture taken of fire garage after Brian Palmer emailed staff and myself stating garage was checked today and has been cleared of debris Monday, June 12, 2023, 4:20 PM." Photograph two is a photo showing what appears to be the same exterior area, but from a different angle of view, with the following contents. A rusted metal bench swing with a torn seat fabric and a washing machine. The written description, "Picture taken of fire garage after Brian Palmer emailed staff and myself stating garage was checked today and has been cleared of debris Monday, June 12, 2023, 4:38 PM." And photograph number three is a photo showing a partially closed garage door, which appears to have suffered fire damage. The written response, "Pic of the garage door after Brian Palmer emails Todd Morley. Repaired garage door and now opens and closes properly Tuesday, January 9, 2024, 4:54 PM." And again, I have those three photos if anybody wants to see them. Sure. Sure. So they are in order as they were described. My response, "As for the two photos dated June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three," actually, they're all dated June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. I said, no, one of them is January ninth. "Refer to email correspondence timeline that we talked about before. In this email was on June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three at twelve fifty-six P M. Mrs. Schaller requested a status update regarding the garage attached to one eighteen Jackson." Now, the garage attached to one eighteen Jackson was a focal point for Ms. Schaller and code enforcement because there was a fire had been back there, and some contents had been moved outside of the garage. Those are the swing and the refrigerator and the various things. So she asked for a status update regarding the garage attached to one eighteen Jackson. Two minutes later, that same email, Mr. Palmer forwards the inquiry to code enforcement officer. An hour later, Mrs. Schaller clarifies a point about a different item on this email thread. At four seventeen P M., code enforcement officer sends an email to Ms. Schaller and others indicating the garage was checked today and has been cleared of debris. The code enforcement officer and Ms. Schaller both later clarified that the email was referring to the area outside of the garage. So everything that's outside of the garage in those photos, not the stuff inside the garage. The stuff outside is what they're concerned about. Mrs. Schaller's photo indicates the photo of debris was taken three minutes later at four twenty P M. So referencing the email from the code enforcement officers at four seventeen P M., he said it was all clear. She takes a photo at four twenty P M., three minutes later. The code enforcement officer stated that he recalled having visited the property on June twelfth, that same day, prior to sending the email, but he was unsure of the time and that he saw no debris outside the garage. Given this information, the code enforcement officer concluded that someone had to have moved the debris to the outside area in the time between when he left the property and the time of the photo at four twenty P M. In a follow-up meeting with Mrs. Schaller, she indicated that she's baffled as to why the code enforcement officer would say it was cleared. She added that the debris had not been moved since December. She inquired if it was possible that the code enforcement officer deemed the area clear because Mr. Reynolds or some other person said it was clear? She asked if the code enforcement officer actually laid eyes on it on June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Same for the garage door. Next page, "What was the actual complaint made by Mrs. Schaller?" The complaint was, "The garage attached to one eighteen Jackson has not been cleaned or secured." City manager inquiry, "Did the code enforcement officer have legal authority to cite a code violation for the debris outside the garage?" This was in a space that was not her tenant's space. This is why I asked this question. Yes, there was no fence at the time, simply a piece of plywood that was placed to block access. This made the area viewable from the parking lot area to the east. So that satisfied my inquiry there. Finding number one, "At this time, there is no practical way to verify whether the debris was removed and replaced later that same day as the code enforcement officer claims, or whether it was never removed at all on June twelfth, twenty-three, as Mrs. Schaller claims. Both have stood by their respective statements." And that's as far as I can dig down on that. And that's one of those areas where Mrs. Schaller says, "We don't agree." You know, I agree. It's he said, she said, and that's where it ends.
I have a question, city manager. In one of the photos, it's noting that this, the, it took a picture, there's a photo. It has it occurred after it was, the debris was cleaned up, but it's back outside. And in it, there's crime scene tape or construction tape, caution tape. Do, do we know when they went out, when the officer went out there and looked at it?
He stated that he was there on June twelfth, prior to sending his email at four seventeen P M.
Okay, so this photo taken after the fire garage after Brian you called and emailed staff, this supposedly, he pushed everything outside and put up tape.
What he's claiming is that it was clear when he was there, and it was not clear when the photo was taken. He's not saying where it came from or how it got there.
Thank you.
That leads to my second finding. Finding number two, "Code enforcement officers documenting and photo documenting is crucial to resolving disputes such as this. There was no established departmental practice regarding the documentation and/or photo documentation of every violation, compliance, and site visit." And obviously, you'll know a recommendation will be forthcoming on that. As for the photo with the date of January ninth, this is the garage door. It shows only a garage door partially closed. Note, it does not provide evidence of the door's ability to fully function properly. I made a clarification note, the first time city manager received this email thread was on three twenty-six, twenty-four, and not earlier, as indicated. That's when Mr. Morrison forwarded it. Prior to that, the thread was among, in between, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Dickey, Mr. Palmer. In that thread, on one nine twenty-four, Mr. Palmer indicated that as of that date, the garage door had been repaired and now opens and closes properly. At the follow-up meeting, Mrs. Schaller stated that there were two garage door openings, but only one had a garage door. The other opening does not have a garage door, nor is it required to have one. Also, Mrs. Schaller asked, "Did the code enforcement officer try to open and close the garage door, or did the code enforcement officer deem the garage door operational because Mr. Reynolds or some other person said it was operational?" Mr. Palmer later clarified that the code enforcement officer stated that he did not attempt to open or close the garage door himself. He observed the garage door open and then observed the garage door closed partway. Mr. Reynolds informed the code enforcement officer the garage door opens and closes with some effort. With this statement, the code enforcement officer made the assumption that the door was capable of closing to zero percent open. Mr. Palmer also later clarified that the code enforcement officer stated that he did not observe the door fully closed, in other words, to the point that it was zero percent open. So that led me to, well, can we access the door now to see if it's operational? It has since been boarded up on the outside. Can we see it from the inside? If it was broken then, it could still possibly be broken. On five three twenty-four, just a few days ago, property owner was contacted by code enforcement, requested access to the garage to see if the door was in fact operational. Property owner stated he was not in town. He does not authorize the city to enter his property. He also stated the case has gone to the special magistrate. His property has been leaned, and he will be selling his property soon, and does not want to deal with this anymore. So we took that as a no. Leads to finding number three, "Without having seen the door fully travel from a one hundred percent open position to a zero percent open position, the code enforcement officer should not have accepted the owner's statement that the door was capable of closing to zero percent open, and further, should not have instructed the code enforcement manager that the door opened and closed properly. Accepting verbal information should not be a substitute for verification." And those are my three findings on issue number five. Mayor?
Thank you. So it's the verbal again, I think, is your finding, right? That we are, and in this particular case, the property owner who has had, I think, the same owner through issues that we know go back to two thousand and seventeen, and the, at this point, we're trying to secure the building and make it safe with the magistrate order, to secure the building. And the knowledge that people were going in and out has been, from what I see, longstanding, understanding that. And so this owner also has not been easy to communicate with, and I think documentation shows there's been issues in the midst of that with, with communication. And so we relied on this person who has not been easy to communicate with, to be accurate. And I, and I think while verbal's not, it's who is providing the verbal under this and with a magistrate order is where I think if we, today, that particular opening has a board over it and it's secure, if I understand?
Yes, sir.
But what would it show if you could go in and see that it doesn't?
This is something that Peg and I discussed, that if it was never actually capable of closing to zero percent and it was boarded up, chances are, nobody's been bothered out there to fix it, to make sure it can close to zero percent. So we can get out and see it from the inside, we can see if it closes to zero percent. That's why, that's something worth doing. And Peg and I were trying to make that happen, and.
But if it doesn't close to zero percent, what does that tell us?
It tells us that there was a misstatement, that it said the door, what was the wording?
Well, I think.
Was in fact operational. It, it, okay, so it might move some, but if it doesn't perform the function of closing, I wouldn't call it operational. I mean, if my screen door didn't close and mosquitoes were getting in the house, I wouldn't say, if there's something blocking it, I wouldn't say it's functional. It's supposed to close, it's supposed to keep the mosquitoes out. If the garage door is not capable of closing, then it's not fully operational. And we didn't have any evidence that it was fully operational. All we had evidence was, we saw, he saw it open up, he saw it close partially.
There's no evidence that we have, that he says.
Goes all the way.
Photographs.
Right. So a photograph for code enforcement is really important for things like this.
For compliance.
Yeah, just to show, here it is, here's a picture of it closed. It's a date timestamp photo. Same with the debris outside the garage. If he had taken a photo, the debris's not there on June twelfth at one P M. That, that goes a long way, because Peg's providing photos that the debris is still there.
Yeah, minutes later.
Yeah.
Yes.
This, this garage door that's burnt is, that's in front of, that's this?
I believe so, Brian, is that correct?
This.
Peg, is that correct? That's the garage door in the background of the pictures with the debris? She, Peg took the photos.
And this is the door.
And that's the door that was covering this one area.
Well, I know, you know, looking at the pictures, if this stuff was moved in the garage and then moved back out for some unknown reason, all the cords and everything are in the exact same spot they were before. So how can you move something in and out and the cords and the wires all be in the exact same spot?
It's possible. I mean, I could do it, but, but I understand there were some women living there, one woman living there, I don't know who it was, but I've seen a woman move a refrigerator, it can happen.
These aren't before and after pictures, are they?
No.
So there wouldn't have been a moved refrigerator?
There was no before pictures.
Okay, so.
After pictures.
That he didn't have, all I think we had was.
Well, but I mean, the position of the cord doesn't matter.
Right.
Well, if he, if he said it was gone at one, and this was four twenty, and it's.
It's he said, she said. They're both standing by their statements firmly.
I, I want to make sure, I understand what Councilmember Willis is saying, is that we're comparing, there is no before, but you're January nine, okay, that's January. So the two on June twelfth, the time, four twenty and four thirty-eight. So for, the four twenty is the picture taken of the fire garage after Brian Palmer emailed staff and myself saying garage has been checked today and has been cleared of debris? That, that picture doesn't say, that was taken by Peg.
Right.
So there wasn't a.
At four twenty.
Code enforcement officer got there, he didn't take a picture?
No pictures.
Right. Yeah, that timeline on page twenty with the timestamps right below number five response, June twelfth, it started at twelve fifty-six P M. when Ms. Schaller requested a status update. And very quickly and impressively, I would say, Officer Palmer, two minutes later, literally forwards it to code enforcement officer Robinson, I assume?
Yes, sir. And it's reasonable to assume that he went out after that, but he said he might have gone out there in the morning. He said he had been going out there with some frequency. He just didn't record when he, what, what time he was there, but he, he says he was sure he was there on June twelfth.
Well, my thing is, is why would Ms. Schaller at twelve fifty-six want an update? And I think I've got enough relationship to think she, she didn't email thinking that it's finished. She looks out back and she sees it.
Yeah.
And I think she's saying, hey, what, what's going on here? And the, so she emails at one, she saw, oh, these don't have one o'clock timestamp. She saw an issue, and then it was forwarded two minutes later from Officer Palmer to, to Officer Robinson, and then. Yeah, it's, where am I missing there? It seems like something's at four o'clock.
If you have four seventeen is when the code enforcement officer responds to Mrs. Schaller.
Thank you.
Saying it's been cleared.
Okay, and then doesn't Ms. Schaller at then, so at four seventeen, so about one o'clock, she inquires, a few hours later, code enforcement officer says, "The garage was checked today and it has been cleared of debris." So.
So she leaps to her camera, she goes out there three minutes later and takes a photo and says, "How can this be?"
Well, at one o'clock, we have knowledge that the, the people we serve, the citizens, the business owners, has got an issue. And then at four, we say, "It's good." And then she responds, literally three minutes later, with a photo showing that it's not good. I have no reason to think that at one o'clock, when Ms. Schaller sent it, it looked any different than, than at four o'clock. I think that that's the issue that, that I see. And, and from these findings, it's Officer Palmer saying it's cleared of debris. And these pictures mean that someone went out. If he got it at one o'clock, the soonest he could have got there was two minutes, I mean, it's right down the road, right, one oh two.
But he says he might have been there before, earlier in the day too, because he'd been going out there with some frequency.
He's not giving us a time for when he was there.
Right.
Can I else, real quick, can I just make a clarification? I'm not the one that stated, you just said Officer Palmer, I'm not the one that stated it was cleared of debris.
You were relating the information that code enforcement officer gave you.
No, the garage was checked today and it was cleared of debris was sent by the code enforcement officer in an email out to everyone. I sent the, I sent the, the email to him, I forwarded the email to him on, at twelve fifty-eight, asking him to respond. I just wanted to make sure because that was just mentioned.
Did he log an action that, I mean, like in B S N A., was there any field notes or record that he went to the site? Does he remember when he went to the site?
He, he says he remembers typing the email and that he was there that day. But no, there's no other record.
Okay. So at four seventeen, garage was checked today, cleared of debris. Thirty minutes later, clearly shows the debris was not cleared in response, or no, a few minutes later. And then the next day on six thirteen, so I'm putting myself in her shoes, she says, "It's being cleared today," and she's, you know, it's on her back front row seats of this, "No, it's not, here's a photo." She doesn't get a reply that day. She doesn't get a reply until the next day on six thirteen. I don't know if that report says this. I don't know if that report says this, but I know that's according to the timeline we were all provided by Peg, according to her email records. Is it on 6:13, Chris Robinson emailed back and stated, "We will have Shane either remove the appliances in damage, swing, or store them in the garage."
I don't have a copy of that in front of me.
The. Why wasn't that, I guess, why wasn't that sta- stated? Like, that same day? Or, I guess, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding.
Mayor, I'm not.
When it was resolved.
Not familiar with the document you're looking at.
It was a timeline emailed from Peg, I believe, to all of us, the entire council, and I believe you were on it.
I don't have, I just don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay. But, okay, well, this is a part of, I guess, the, our findings as a whole, so. All right, that, we, we take photographs when things are not in compliance. And I think we're saying, we should take photographs.
When they're in compliance.
Are in compliance.
Yeah.
And, and we typically do take photographs when things are in compliance. Or are we going around just verbally saying things are in compliance with no evidence?
Well, that, that's my comment here, and finding number two, there's no established departmental practice regarding photo documenting every violation, every compliance, every site visit.
But isn't it, it isn't it about a preponderance of evidence? Isn't that the word that it uses, and that we really want to have evidence? And we provide our code enforcement with cameras in the, or, I guess that is a question, how do they take photographs? Do they have their own camera?
But you use the app that timestamps and date stamps it though.
Is that a city?
City issued cellphone, yes.
And, and that's the one that produces the timestamps that you're just?
There's an app on that phone, I forget what it's called, but puts the timestamp.
Timestamp app.
It's, it's got a name, another name. I don't think it's Crisis Track, but the, there are photos.
I've seen it, it's nice.
Says cowboy.
Says photo stamp.
Okay, and so. We don't have any photos of that day from his visit or nothing.
No.
Okay. Any other questions, council, on this one? Thank you.
And that is, finishes the findings on issue number five. Mayor, we're ready to go on to issue number six.
Yes.
That's beginning on page 22. This is a claim that Code Enforcement Department found property in compliance while a violation remained. Mrs. Schaller indicated to me that she had filed a complaint regarding an individual who routinely sat in a chair on the walkway, blocking the route to her business front entrance door. Mrs. Schaller claimed that her customers had voiced concerns that the individual in the chair made it difficult for her patrons to pass by and would have to step off the walkway into the parking lot to walk around the individual. She stated that Code Enforcement responded, "There is a five-foot clear walkway and no evidence of a violation." She claims the violation remains to this day. I've gone out there, I've seen what she's talking about, there's a chair sitting there and there's not five feet in front of that chair. I don't think the sidewalk itself is even five feet wide. So, the response, Mr. Palmer indicated that the tenant had been displaying merchandise on the sidewalk and added that Code Enforcement Department staff was able to successfully enforce City Code 110458-F, "All outdoor display must maintain a minimum five-foot sidewalk clearance." The tenant complied by moving all outside, outdoor display indoors. No notice of violation was issued because we got voluntary compliance in the field. The Code Enforcement Officer stated that he has witnessed the chair, both occupied and not occupied, on the sidewalk. However, because this section of code only regulates shopping centers and retail stores using outside display, and neither the person nor the chair are considered merchandise, the chair with or without an occupant do not represent a violation of 110458. Code Enforcement Officer stated that he had made multiple requests of the tenant responsible for the chair to remove the chair from the walkway and not return it to the walkway. The tenant did remove it, but later the tenant placed the chair in the walkway again, this pattern has continued, it is a cat and mouse game. In a follow-up meeting with Mrs. Schaller, the city manager inquired as to whether the chair and occupant could present a violation of the ADA code, which requires an accessible route to each business entrance by maintaining a 42-inch clear path of travel along the sidewalk. However, Mrs. Schaller clarified that the only ADA accessible parking space is to the west of both business entrance doors, and the chair placed on the east of the easternmost business entrance makes this portion of sidewalk outside of an accessible route. So, my question, if it was not a violation of code, why did the Code Enforcement Officer make multiple requests to the tenant responsible for the chair to remove the chair from the walkway and not return it to the walkway? In a follow-up interview, meeting with Mr. Palmer, he stated that the original request included Mrs. Schaller's statement that the individual in the chair was harassing passersby. Mr. Palmer's answer, the Code Enforcement Officer thought he was being nice, trying to help her out. Departmental practice requires complaints regarding harassing behavior to be forwarded to BCSO. The 21122 field note states, "The chairs are not in violation since there is five feet in front of the chairs they sit in to allow for unobstructed pathway in front of his store." Her question is, why would the Code Enforcement Officer state that there is five feet of clear walkway if there is not with the chair present? In a follow-up meeting with Mr. Palmer, he stated that this statement is simply in error, and he will place an updated corrective note in the field notes. So, finding number one, having found no evidence of a violation, the Code Enforcement Officer had no authority to request the chair and/or the chair's occupant be moved off the sidewalk. Finding number two, departmental practice requiring harassing behavior to be forwarded to BCSO was not followed.
Okay, and so how did we know that we have no authority with finding number one? How do we come to that conclusion?
There was no code being violated.
How did we find that out, though?
We researched code and found no code that applied to this situation. It wasn't ADA code, it wasn't merchandise display in the five-foot clear walkway.
So, when, when we go out to the site, what, what code were we maintaining that day when we approached? Because I think code enforcement is upon observing or receiving a code violation. So, I guess, is the, is the issue to accurately apply the code from the beginning?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb here, but I'll ask Mr. Palmer to verify. Because the reference was made to the five-foot clearance, I think in the officer's mind, he was thinking about that merchandise. The sidewalks have to have five-foot clearance for merchandise display. So, he was possibly going out there thinking, "Five foot clear, five foot clear, five foot clear." But the fact that that only applied to merchandise, not people, not chairs, unless the chair happened to be merchandise, which it wasn't. And I think that's what he was thinking when he was asking him to move it back inside. But Brian, Brian, you might have a better guess than I do.
No, that's exactly what it was. He was, he went out there with the merchandise code in his head, and he utilized that code to tell him, you know, you need to be five feet off.
And, and I had a question. What code is that?
110458-F.
110458-F is what he went out with in his head, and then we learned that that's, we believe that's not applicable.
Yeah, if it's not merchandise, it's not applicable.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, I had looked up the, the 458 code as, for the retail 110458. But I also took a little bit of a dive into the Florida Building Code statutes. Under clear width and floor surface, it is unlawful for protruding objects to create a reduction in the minimum clear width of accessible routes. Additionally, all walking surfaces located along a means of egress are required to be slip resistant, securely attached, which wouldn't make any difference with this. However, under the means of egress definition, it says in the Florida Building Code, "Continuous and unobstructed way of egress travel from any accessible point to a public way." So, does that, would that apply with?
It wouldn't, because you're reading from the accessibility portion of the code. And the accessibility pathway ends when you can get from a handicap parking space to each business door. Spaces beyond that, where there's no more doors to entrances, are not part of the accessible route. That, that concrete doesn't even need to be there, that could just be dirt. You don't even need concrete there.
Okay, thank you, I was wondering about that one.
110458, shopping centers and retail stores using outside display?
Yes, sir.
The word merchandising.
Sub parentheses F.
All out, F, "All outdoor display must maintain a minimum five-foot sidewalk clearance."
Yes, sir.
Where's merchandising?
For merchandise, that's what that's about, the whole section is about.
I don't see that word anywhere. I do see, I'm not saying, I'm just, I really want to follow this and, and think, how are we thinking? I'm not, "Shopping centers and retail stores using outside display." The word "display" you're saying is merchandise?
Yes, sir.
Shall not exceed the size 10% or 2,000. The outside display areas should be construed the same floor. Maintain minimum five-foot sidewalk clearance for pedestrians. Did this block the five foot? Do we agree with that, that they did, they did not have five foot?
Yeah, there's not five feet, because the chair's there.
So, are we taking the position here that because if it's not merchandise, which it doesn't say that, it says "display," and I think words matter in these instances, it says "display," can't block five foot, but other things can encroach on the five foot?
Now, that, that section doesn't talk to other things other than "display."
So, you can just cover the sidewalks as long as you're not selling anything? Is, that's how we're understanding this?
Yeah, I, I'm seeing that, that if, if there's no display, that code section, if there's no display, that code section doesn't apply.
City Attorney, do we have a definition on "display," or is that something, is, because I can see how "display," I agree with the city, would be merchandising.
I was looking at the definitions in the zoning code, chapter 110, I'm not seeing a definition for "display" or "outdoor display."
Maintain a minimum five-foot sidewalk clearance for pedestrians. It's, the title of it, "Shopping centers and retail stores using outside display." What was it, a chair?
Well, there was more than a chair at one point, there were T-shirts out there as well.
What were the T-shirts for?
I believe they were displayed merchandise.
Yeah, they were on a rack, they were just secondhand T-shirts. This, this whole section of code, the city council approved a few years ago. We actually did a, a, a ordinance that amended this section of code. I don't have the code right in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly what the ordinance number was and what year it was. But it wasn't that many years ago. So, I guess what we could do is maybe go pull that agenda cover, and maybe that would give us some additional details on answering the mayor's questions, but.
You mean?
Pardon?
You mean as to the intent of the code?
Yes, exactly. But yeah, this was something the council approved a few years ago.
So, I have a question. So, if he, if he's out there sitting in his chair, the way it's, there's like a flower box, and then there's a little sidewalk, and then the parking comes right up to the sidewalk. And his chair is there, you can't get around it. I've been there and been on the side of the building and walked around to the front. It is blocking. I mean, you would have to go out in the street and go around.
Right.
Go around.
Why are they have, why do they have to, item C, 110458-C, "Maintain minimum five-foot sidewalk clearance for pedestrians." Why doesn't that and all of its logic just stand on its own? Why are we saying, you know, if you put a watermelon out there, you know, or you put a basketball, like, I'm just making facetious, but it, to me, I get the "display" side.
Well, you wouldn't look at this code section if it weren't for "display."
But where does the five foot come back? Because I think this connects to what Councilmember Jackson was bringing up, is, don't we have a minimum five-foot requirement in saying, "Hey, you can have displays, but don't forget about that five-foot minimum"? Isn't that, I don't know if it's.
Not familiar with that, I, I do know that the signs of chapter 94 says you can't have.
Sandwich boards.
Sandwich boards blocking a sidewalk, it does talk about it there.
Is the.
But you can have a chair blocking the sidewalk.
It doesn't say you can or can't.
Doesn't say you can't.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In looking at an aerial view of Ellie Mays, the, next to the handicap parking space, there's striped designation for a walkway to get to the.
Access aisle.
Access aisle. All right, on the very east end of that sidewalk in front of Ellie Mays, there is.
What looks to be an access aisle with no handicap parking space next to it.
But doesn't that still lead to giving access to that sidewalk?
No, the access aisle is a requirement of a handicap parking space. The fact that there's an area of pavement that's striped to look like an access aisle, and there's no accompanying handicap park, parking space, that might imply that it's meant to be an access point. But according to ADA code, the route has to come from the parking space to the doors. Anything else is just.
So, if there were another handicap parking space at the east end of that sidewalk.
Now, we'd have a problem.
That would be different.
Okay.
And there could have been a handicap parking space there at one time. But maybe when the parking lot was restripped, it was done away with, I, I don't know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of possibilities here.
And ADA code requires one handicap space for the first 25 spaces, and I don't think there's even 20 spaces out there.
Yeah.
So, one is the only, you only need one handicap parking space, and you've got it out there.
This one is just the five foot. I think the five foot sounds like might have been specified for these in our, David was explaining, I do see 2016 under it, but whenever these were amended to say, and, you know, protecting access. We don't have anywhere else in our code where you must maintain access. We know that if you have a display, you got to protect that five foot. I guess that's, we're not, that doesn't come from anywhere sourced?
Part, part of that, I remember, was from Beachwave. We had an issue there about display of merchandise outside, also in and the windows. But merchandise outside, now, he's got a sidewalk, or he had a sidewalk that I think was like eight feet wide. So, merchandise couldn't intrude into, he makes sure five feet of it was clear, so that last three feet could be merchandise, that's okay. But in no case shall the five feet be impeded upon. I think that's the history you're looking for about that code change.
Yeah, yeah, I remember back in 1516, we were getting a lot, at the time, outdoor display was only allowed through a special exception.
Yeah, that's right.
And we were starting to get a lot of those, and so I guess the decision was made, let's permit outdoor display, however, you're going to have to meet these requirements. And those requirements are contained in, in, in that section.
That sounds right to me.
Yeah. Also, and remember too, that public right-of-way, public sidewalks, we have a little bit more discretion on what we can do there regard versus private property, and I'll call them private sidewalks. Yeah.
If there were, was, just trash bags out there, just blocked, I mean, we have basic property maintenance, right? I mean, that's an extreme example of public health and.
Let's say there's large potted plants out there, blocking it.
Good example. We don't, your finding is we don't have anything to deal with that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because it's, we specified it to "display." We don't have a definition of "display." I mean, would it be as simple as saying "display" or any other thing that blocks, right?
We could certainly make a clarification in the code.
Yeah. I'd, I'd be interested in going back into the ordinance, the, the agenda cover and the, and the ordinance itself and looking at it.
But doesn't the ADA also apply regardless of a display?
When it's outside of the accessible route, it doesn't apply, because this is beyond the accessible route, this is extra paved sidewalk area beyond that.
Okay, well, thank you for talking through that one. I think we all want to keep sidewalks clear, but since this is not technically a public sidewalk, it's the perimeter of the building.
And it is in the tenant's space.
ADA is being honored.
This is not a violation of ADA.
Because what would be a violation of ADA?
If it was in front of either door or between either door, but this is past the second door.
We're calling doors that.
There's Ellie Mays entrance, and then. There's Ellie Mays entrance, and then there's the thrift store entrance.
Entrance to the thrift store.
Both of those doors.
You're walking east, and then it's the opposite.
Yeah, the other direction doesn't require handicap access.
Okay.
It only has to come from the handicap parking space.
Okay. Counsel, any other things on this one? None?
Moving on, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Page twenty-four begins issue seven, which is the fire issue. This is the one that I added to it. I also reviewed this with Mrs. Schaller, like I did the other ones. In a memo dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Mr. Dickey indicates that a fire occurred on August fifth, twenty-two. The building is a two-story building with businesses on the first floor, excuse me, and two residential apartments on the second floor. The apartments are accessible via an exterior stairway that lands at the roof level. To gain access to the two apartments requires walking across a portion of the roof. The fire damaged ceiling slash roof at the rear portion of the first-floor thrift store, which was in the storage area, and the roof serving as the access way to the two apartments on the second floor was now deemed an unsafe access way, and the apartments were placarded by the building official as unsafe. However, the fire did not damage the remainder of the thrift store. Neither did it damage the remainder of the apartments, only the walkway to the apartments. Further, the memo indicates that appropriate city officials had determined two things. One, the thrift thrift store could continue to operate. Two, as long as the structure did not pose a public safety risk, there was no timetable placed on remediation. Mrs. Schaller indicated that persons had periodically accessed the second-floor apartments, spending time within them. She reported this concern to code enforcement staff on multiple occasions. The code enforcement officer indicated that he placed caution tape on and around the stairwell multiple times in an attempt to prevent unauthorized entry. He stated that when the caution tape would be removed, he would then return to place more caution tape. In recent days, this is not helpful, but Mayor Morrison expressed a similar sentiment to me. Further, Mr. Morrison indicated a great deal of time had passed before the access was effectively restricted. All true. In a follow-up meeting with Mrs. Schaller, Mrs. Schaller referenced the same, the memo verbiage, as long as the structure did not pose a public safety risk, there was no timetable placed on remediation, so she asked the following. Who was the city official charged with evaluating, determining, and determining that the structure did not pose a public safety risk while she was making multiple reports that persons had periodically accessed the second-floor apartments? And why was it not secured against access for seventeen months with evidence of people accessing the apartments? In a follow-up meeting, Mr. Palmer clarified that remediation is not the same as restricting access. Remediation means the restoring of the premises to a usable code-compliant condition. Restricting access means disallowing, effectively prohibiting or barring entry while the premises is in, is not in a usable code-compliant condition. And he clarified also, if a property has sufficiently restricted access, it can often go without remediation for a great length of time. This case went to the special magistrate where a ruling was made on both remediation and restricted access. Did we issue a notice of violation related to the damage caused by the fire? Yes, it was issued on eleven one twenty-three, so that's fifteen months later. In a follow-up meeting, Mr. Palmer was asked, why did fifteen months pass between the placarding of the structure and the notice of violation? The answer, the next page, when a property suffers a fire loss, the owner is usually challenged to make arrangements toward remediation. For example, insurance claims, tenant evictions, and loss of income. Departmental practice is to allow reasonable time to deal with these matters. From the time of the placarding of the premises, eight five twenty-two, to the time of effectively restricted access, late January twenty twenty-four, seventeen months had elapsed. Why had it taken this long to effectively restrict access while Mrs. Schaller was making complaints that people were accessing the apartments? Answer, the special magistrate could not hear the case until after the NOV was sent. This was on a, on twelve seven twenty-three. This was a fifteen-month process. The special magistrate gave until twelve twenty-two, twenty-three to restrict access. This did not, did not happen. The next meeting, the Massey hearing, was on one twenty-three, twenty-four. This effectively takes up the remaining two months. It was days after the Massey hearing that the access was effectively restricted. That was the plywood boxing up of the stairs. Why wasn't something more effective being done to restrict access prior to the date of notice of violation? The effective restriction required the installation of an attached structure, the two-by-fours and plywood. The installation of an attached structure requires the authorization of the special magistrate. The attachment of caution tape does not. Stated a different way, the city does not have the authority to attach a structure without the special magistrate's authorization. So my revised question then is then, why wasn't the notice of violation advanced sooner? Consistent with departmental practice, the owner was being afforded reasonable time to remediate. Note, a notice of violation is required to include all violations. In this case, the notice of violation needed to include all remediation violations as well as access restriction violation. Because all was wrapped up in a single notice violation, and the department practice was to afford reasonable time, all went after fifteen months. That leads to this question. Could a notice of violation have been forwarded to the special magistrate sooner with the stipulation for a soon-to-come access restriction and a later-to-come remediation? Yes, it could have been issued as soon as the day of the fire. My finding is, there is a departmental practice related to notice of violation timeframes for items which are strictly public safety violations. However, there is no departmental policy related to notice of violation timeframes for public safety-related items, which also include a calamity which the owner is struggling to overcome. A new policy needs to address equally these two important needs, one, public safety, and two, reasonable customer service requirements. That's the finding on that one, Mayor.
Thank you.
Be happy to continue. There is more. We're nearing the end.
Yes, counsel, I'll just make a note. We can circle back and ensure we get through it. I'm fine with moving on if we need.
I I just want to add that this is where public safety meets head-to-head with customer service. Two very different needs. Yes, the owner's gonna need good customer service, but we have to have public safety too. So we have to find a way to walk that path with him, make sure we handle both of those. Get the restricted access right now. Once that's restricted, give him twelve months to to remediate. That's fine. And that can be done in one notice of violation. Moving forward, what did the special magistrate order say? This is copy and paste from a lot of information that you've already seen. I don't know if we want to go through all of it. I want to skip down a little bit. It says, does, did this case go to the special? Yes. Original hearing twelve seven, Massey hearing one twenty-three. What was the order of the special magistrate? Original hearing, he had till December twenty-second to do these things, and this included securing the garage door, boarding over, closing up, make sure that people can't access the garage, secure this utility closet, and then also it said by March eighth, repair all damage caused by the fire, repair, replace the garage door, new staircase. At that time, he was saying he's gonna put a new staircase in, which I don't know why it's a concrete staircase. There's really nothing wrong with the stairs, except that there's no guardrail and they lead to an unsafe walkway and an unsafe roof. The stairs are okay.
Ms. City Manager, this section, the respondent shall, by no later than Friday, March eighth, obtain any required permits.
And?
And within the time allowed by the permit, not to be confused with, he needed to get these repairs done by March eighth, right? He needed to apply for the permit.
Right.
And that permit might have a year or six months.
That's six months, and that didn't happen. He didn't apply for the permit, correct, Brian?
On March ninth, we knew that for compliance of the magistrate is, were permits pulled? And March ninth, the answer is, no.
But there was the Massey hearing on January twenty-third. On this one, he ordered the respondent shall, no later than the twenty-eighth, five days later, Bolton secure plywood to the main building and staircase to form a box blocking front. That was what caused the securing. That actually worked. B was about a fence to stop people from being able to climb the fence. That was complied with as well. And then it also said you had till Friday, March eighth, to obtain permits to do the rest of this, which also hasn't been done. But A and B were done. That's the temporary. The temporary securing was done. The rest of it was not. So what has happened since the special magistrate order? Access to the stairs has been sufficiently restricted. Exposed fence rails have been secured against climbing. March eighth, twenty eighth deadline passed without bringing the property into compliance concerning all of those things. Except he has continued to secure and prevent occupancy of the upstairs. This case was presented to the magistrate on four twenty-three, twenty-four, and the property is now accruing a lien of two hundred dollars for the first day and a hundred dollars every day thereafter. In a follow-up meeting, Mrs. Schaller referenced a YouTube recording from the twelve seven twenty-three special magistrate meeting wherein the code enforcement officer stated he had seen people living in the upstairs apartments on five eighteen twenty-three. This was nine months after the fire. She inquired, why was the notice of violation not issued until eleven one twenty-three with this knowledge? Wasn't this sufficient evidence that caution tape was not enough and the property now represented a public safety risk? Additionally, she referenced a collection of timeline entries of field notes, which had been produced by code enforcement, which begins with the following entries. And they're on five eighteen, and it talks about individuals living in garages, sheriff's office talking to them, kicking people out. Talks about detached garage, talks about site visit and placing caution tape, doesn't say anything about upstairs access. The next one says sheriff's office spoke with staff a few days ago about people living again in the detached garage. They kicked her out again. She will return. They cannot arrest her unless there's an affidavit. Again, none of this is about upstairs stuff. So she asked, where was the reference caution tape placed? The answer, it was on the main entry door to the apartment unit upstairs, on the stairwell, and on the attached garage door opening. Why did this timeline not include a reference to individuals going upstairs to access the apartments? If the code enforcement officer was aware of it happening, as he stated he was in the twelve seven video? Answer, there was no, there was no field note entered reported in this document regarding the individuals going upstairs. However, in a different case number, twenty-three dash one eighty-three, it was created in response to this issue. In the BSNA field notes for the case, there is an entry dated nine twenty-seven twenty-three, which states, staff received a complaint that individuals are again living in the upstairs unit. Units posted as unfit for human occupancy, staff conducted a site visit and found no one in the units. The door along with the stairs was taped off with caution tape. Staff also spoke with Cowboy, who said he was not aware of anyone living in the upstairs again. The property was taped again. And additionally, this was mentioned by the code enforcement officer during the special magistrate hearing on twelve seven twenty-three. So it was mentioned in case number twenty-three dash one eighty-three, but it wasn't in the field notes from the other case. Mayor?
Thank you. Is that the end?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, I want to give a public opportunity for public comment at the end. We're at nine thirty-four. I'd like to end this as soon as we can, not have to extend time. So with that, anything? In no particular order, if any council member has any comments or questions.
I have a question of.
Yes.
I need to go back to the, a question about the parking lot. And Mr. Keenan or Moon Hut. Has that been resolved? Has he gotten the permits he needs from the Saint John's water?
I don't think he's received, did he get a permit? Brian?
From Saint John's?
No, from the city.
From the city? He got a permit from the city in his final.
That's right. Kim Lee Horn recommended he get with Saint John's. And I believe there's a very recent update, since I was past that in this investigation, so I didn't add it. What's the most recent update?
Saint John's responded that they, they would not require him to have a permit for that.
So he can pave over the ground that was already there and without a permit?
According to Saint John's review of everything, they said that he does not require a permit, that it's, I I think they said that it drains to the road, and he wouldn't need a permit for that.
I think what we need to do is follow up with Kim Lee Horn and see recommendations, because I've heard Peg say that it causes water to go onto her property. But let's make a follow-up with Kim Lee Horn on that.
That's all. I just wanted to go back to that, and I just think that this, you know, hopefully we have learned something from all of this. Put Ms. Peg through a lot for the last few years. And I hope we get to the truth and figure out how to fix it.
Thank you, Mayor Bertin. Counsel, Member Jackson Willis Davis.
Now, according to the timeline on the people living in the apartment above, the sheriff's department was called out to there and wasn't able to remove anyone?
The notes that I see was that it wasn't about the upstairs. It was people living in the downstairs garages and the detached garage. Is that correct, Brian?
The sheriff's department was called out to the upstairs also. They got with the property owner, if I'm not mistaken, and asked the property owner to do a trespassing so they could remove them. The, the sheriff's office can't remove people, is what I've been told, unless they have a trespass. They have a form that you fill out for BCSO.
But that wasn't done?
I, not that I know of.
Okay.
Not that I know of.
You're asking if was someone arrested by our deputies?
Yeah, removed from the upstairs.
And the answer, I think, is?
Don't, don't know.
I, not that I know of. I'm not aware of anybody being removed from there, no.
Did the property owner sign a trespass?
I'm not aware that he did or not, no.
I thought it stated in here.
Would counsel like us to look into that and respond back to on that point?
I don't, I don't know if it's gonna make a difference now, but.
It's been effectively restricted access.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just a little baffled about four-month period that someone was having access there. That shouldn't have happened.
Yeah, it says on page twenty-seven that they responded and asked her, but she'll return, and they couldn't arrest her unless the property owner signs an affidavit. So apparently. Oh, is that in the garage? Okay. Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay.
And then with the situation that Mickey had questions on if in regards to the parking area, I think that this information is not really equal information because of the fact that we're dealing with the two violations versus one. Or one sixteen Jackson. I think we should try to compare apples to apples, because I don't even know when the first one, which was Cowboy filing their complaint regarding one sixteen Jackson parking. I have no idea when that one was resolved. It blends into the next one, which is about the rocks and the swell.
Yeah, it was all still code enforcement case twenty-two dash zero one five. It was just, it was just revised to now.
But why would we revise that if it's two separate complaints, I guess is my question, City Manager.
Because when, when a property, when a property has a notice of violation and a new set of, a new piece of information comes on, we become aware of, there's a new violation. The, you need to capture all of it in one notice of violation, so you revise the first one to not only include what was in the first one, but now add the new violation. And that process continues. If more gets added to it, you revise it again. So that when you do finally take that notice of violation to the magistrate, you've got everything. You're playing with the full deck of violations at that point and not a bunch of separate violations. It's all in one, and it's got the latest and greatest.
And I guess that's common practice then for municipal ways.
And the fire one was a separate case started for that, because it was a. because it was really a separate issue, and that's how code enforcement viewed it. And it wasn't really part of Ms. Schaller's tenant space. It was a different tenant space. I think that was the reason for the different case to open up for that.
And is this so that when they take all of the violations to the magistrate together under one code enforcement notice of violation, is that so that when they put a lien on there, all of those things have to be cleared before the lien is released?
Yep.
Okay. That makes a little more sense, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions this time? I got, let's do this. Let's go back to the, if you still intend to speak, let's go back to the public. And city clerk, if you would, on multiple times coming up, Ms. Vissadomini actually did two cards. Do we want that for each time, city?
Basically about the same issue.
Agreed, thank you. Ms. Schaller, if you're ready. Was there anyone else while she's coming up who intends to speak again? Okay, thank you.
This will be the last time that I'm coming in front of city council about this. I've done my civic duty, I've done the best I can do, and I'm not going to spend any more of my time on this issue. I just want to go ahead and state why I have worked at this for so long. It's because I love my city, I invested into my city, and I want the city to get this right. Here's my perception, and this is why the perception it is. So there was a lot of information led tonight, but let's go ahead and just highlight the facts. The neighbor next to me was seven hundred and fifty-eight days before he received a notice of violation. The building remained unsecured for fifteen months, where every vagrant in town could access it. Not after one, but after two fires, it was not secured. First time that I was told a mistruth was when I made a complaint in twenty-twenty-two. And the field note says that chairs are not in violation since there is five foot in front of them. Mistruth, number one. There's no way there's five feet in front of that chairs. Let's mark that one off. Number two, it's cleared of debris. If you guys want to sit here and think that that was cleared of debris, and then miraculously, it was the stuff back in there brought back out so that I could take a picture of it, well, that's going to be on you. You go ahead and believe that. He was there at one, Shane King. He cleared that area, put everything away, and then took it all back out. In time for me to get another picture. And then you have to realize that at eight thirteen the next day, Chris Robinson emails and said, we will have Shane either remove the appliances in damaged swing or store them in the garage. If I had been there and saw that they were cleared, I'd be going, well, I don't know what happened, but I'll ask him to put them back in the garage where they were. But that's not what stated, stated. We will have Shane either remove the appliances in damaged swing and store them in the garage. I call that lie two. You may call it whatever you like. Then what's stated, the garage door opens and closes properly. Written in an email, right there. The garage door does not open and close properly. Let's call that lie three. No field notes were available prior to twenty-twenty-two. Nope, field notes were available prior to twenty-twenty-two. We got four now? How about this one? Violations go to the owner. We courtesy copy the tenants. Nope. If I may please have one more minute, I'll be done.
Counsel, one more minute, okay? Please.
Okay. This could be my favorite one. I don't know, there's so many. But this might be my favorite one. Cowboy complained of the gravel in the swale on five twenty-four, twenty-three. Figure that one out. When the gravel wasn't laid until six-five of twenty-twenty-three. Not only was it not done, he didn't complain about it, and that is line number five. So when you ask me why I have spent so much time to come up here and to make sure that the council is aware of what's happening, is because from my perception, it is not truthful. And you cannot trust a department, an arm of law enforcement with this information. And if we do not get this right, our city is going to have a long road to hoe. And I, this will be the last. I will not spend any more of my time working through this. I will not help this city council anymore if we cannot simply agree that if these are not bold-faced, they certainly are mistruths and misleading. And the, and the, the five twenty-four that Cowboy complained about the gravel, I will show you the pictures. I have a picture on six-one because I sent it to the contractor. And I have a picture on six-five because he sent it back to me saying it was done. So if you want to believe that on five twenty-four Cowboy complained about gravel that was never even done that, then you go ahead and believe that, but I don't, and I won't.
Thank you.
You know, I don't want any of those seats. I do want everybody's ears to be open. If there are people working in our city hall and getting paid and not doing the proper job, they don't belong here. I had an incident also with code enforcement. I got a certified letter saying I was in violation. And I came down, I spoke with the powers that be. I spoke to the gentleman on the phone that said he wrote it. I told him I'd be right down. He left the building. I spoke with the other gentlemen that were here. They assured me that we'll get to the bottom of this. I said, I'm not leaving till he comes back. When he came back, and when he was questioned, did he physically see what he wrote on that piece of paper? The only thing I wanted was a letter of apology. I know that letter. Even though they say it is an official, it's official. I got a certified letter. He's still working here. And from what I heard tonight, he's still doing the same stuff, same things that aren't true. And if he isn't suspended, I'm going to be writing the letter to Florida today. And I never say anything bad about this city. What they have done to Peg is a disgrace. That place was a hole in the wall. You wouldn't, you wouldn't walk by because you'd get fleas. She wouldn't allow people to go in there if they were problems. She turned that place around. And now the magistrate's in charge of who's going to purchase it? Well, you know, Peg has the first right of refusal in her contract. And if that magistrate tries to pull any crap and giving it to somebody else in the city that doesn't follow the rules, there'll be another letter. I think that we have trouble in River City, and I think somebody better fix it. All right? Todd knows where everybody should be. He shouldn't be babysitting. He came up through ranks. If your job is A, B, C, and D, and you know it's supposed to be A, B, C, and D, and you don't even do A, you don't belong here. We're one point nine square miles. Lots of people would like to work in a little city. I feel bad. I feel bad for everybody sitting here, but I really feel bad for Peg.
Thank you.
And I gave up my whole night of TV for this. Amen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak here? Seeing none, equal. For those at home, I do see one hand raised from Mr. Campbell. Mr. Campbell, if you are still with us and you intend on your hand to raise, I'm going to go ahead and unmute. You should be on.
I'm still here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, first, I'd like, I hope Ms. Schaller is still in the audience. Please, Ms. Schaller, do not give up on helping make Cape Canaveral a better place. Don't, don't back away from it. Please, continue your vigilance. Second thing I'd like to say was a comment early on in this meeting that because the mayor was asking questions, he was attacking staff. Well, I want to make it clear and on the record that asking questions is fundamental to our democracy. Asking what our government is doing is fundamental to our democracy. It's not an attack, it's an obligation. And it's even a higher obligation for members of the, of the council. It is their job to ask the questions. It is not an attack, it's an obligation. Next thing I'd like to talk about is this reference to Cowboy. I find that to be a little bit silly. There's apparently a complaint that was filed, a code enforcement complaint by Cowboy. So I have to assume that the intake for that complaint included a full name, address, and point of contact that's required, and I'd like to see that. And we're referring to somebody as Cowboy in an official meeting. There was a question about what's on a notice of violation. So I pulled up one of my notices of violation. I'm named as a respondent. The date is clearly at the top of the letter, nine twenty-four. This one's nine twenty-four, twenty-eighteen. And in the body of the letter, it gives me thirty days. So the reader of this letter should assume that it's thirty days on the date on the letter. Not when I got it, thirty days on the date in the letter. So there was a question about that. And then I'd like to know, when would a tenant ever be the respondent on a code violation? I don't understand how that would ever be. The next point I'd like to make is this working document discussion. If the city doesn't have a document management policy, you should have a document managed policy that does more than just purge things when you want to get rid of them. I'd like to know, is there a document managed policy that tells how things should be marked, sensitive, classified, working papers? This should never have happened if you had an effective document management system. And then I'd also like to be sure that there was pictures today. I didn't see any of the pictures. We want to make sure that all of this information gets put in the agenda pack or posted to the website. I'm hoping that's going to happen. I believe it should. So those are the points that I wanted to make, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's muted. I do not see any other hands raised and no one indicating here. We're at nine fifty-four PM, back to the council. My, my final statement here, now hearing everyone, is that I, first of all, appreciate all hands, city staff, the public, certainly this council. I have a lot of respect for each and every one of you. And nobody, I think we heard, wants to be in our shoes. And our city manager, I think, has put forth what he, his best to document. Make an analogy that maybe it's something you don't, I don't know if you still maintain the three-story, but there's, I think it was explained, Peg's side under this, our side, and then the truth. Are we still working towards that? Or I guess, what is this?
What this is, represents how far I can go towards the truth. And we've heard Peg say she got several untruthful statements. And, and while I recognize that's a valid perception, this, this is just a report of findings, and these are the answers I'm getting that, from the other side of it. And some of them, I recognize it's going to come down to, well, I believe this, well, I believe that, well, sorry. And that's as far as that can go. And that's not satisfying at all. And I know that's why she's frustrated here. I also want to remind Peg and everyone that there's a lot of good that is to come out of this effort. This is only reporting what happened. Why it happened to the extent that we could. The recommendations that come out of this, that are going to be presented to this council at future meetings, are going to be showing the good that all of this painful effort has brought to the city. When we, when we fix processes in code enforcement, we fix processes in our code, we fix processes in building department because of these things that we've learned. Those, those lessons should reverberate through the future and future generations of staff and council, and hopefully never have to come back and revisit this pain point again. So there's a lot of good to come, and I just want to make sure that this is the bad night. This is as bad as it gets. It gets better from here.
Thank you. I think we've got, from the city manager's desk, a piece of items five in the original council voted, the city manager's part. There's a reason the city attorney involved, because that's why we have him to help. And the goal was that when we saw what happened in the real world, and then when we went back, we're trying to put the pieces together. And I agree, there's been a lot of issues that we found along the way that will improve and will get better. But at some point, we have to say, this is what we have. And today, I think some things have been clarified and added. I think we will have the opportunity in the next two weeks. I have made a request, and it may be you've replied about obtaining, and I brought this up at the last council meeting, access to the BSNA view only with the capability to run reports. I'd like this whole council to have that access. View only, BSNA, community development, finance, and any other modules that we have. This council should have the ability to view, run their own reports that are, that they're interested in, and I believe that. Again, we can't alter one piece of data. We can only see it and use it so that we can serve our residents better. I have not been able to get access. I have not been able to get a response about that. I've emailed multiple times. So now I'm going to ask the council for your support that we all get and give clear direction, access to the BSNA software. And before doing that, I'd like to ask, if you have a concern, you don't have to do it tonight, please email that back and let us all see. And the second thing is that at the meeting coming up in two weeks, earlier, I think we said, we're not going to have time, we got to get back to other things. It is my intention and stated in the last meeting, and with council support, that we, in two weeks, we bring the next items to this council. Because this issue is so much bigger than the code enforcement and community to these properties. Council member Raymond and I clearly have had clashes. But one of the areas that we fully agreed on, the first thing out of her mouth in a strategic planning meeting, I should have stood up and applauded the whole council, was that we've got issues in code enforcement. I just got off the two thousand nine survey, and today, I'm excited about the changes. But I think we have got to be ready to discuss this at the next meeting because there is, we're at twenty-four hours now. We've had a chance to review it. There's life safety issues in our community that we only looked at two properties. What happens when we look at other properties? Each one of us have probably been, and our neighbors, on the wrong side of code enforcement at some point, in some manner. I certainly have. And it came out, and it just, it was similar to this story, in a personal story. As a candidate, as a citizen, as an elected official, none of them resulted in any action from the code enforcement. And those were, this story is, we all have our own stories. I hope this gets all the attention it deserves between now and the meeting. And with that, I'm done. But I do want to thank you, Todd, and all of you who worked towards this, of putting this... of putting this info together. I hope we keep it in front of us. So my request would be that we get BSNA access for view only and reporting capabilities in all modules. And we have an item for discussion or action if you're ready at the next meeting at a minimum. City manager, if there's a concern?
I just want to repeat what I understand. I, I do know that staff is working on a response to the access issue. I'm not familiar with where we are on it because I've been so focused on this. But I know staff is working on that. As to what is expected at the next city council meeting, there are some things that council already clarified that by consensus that you want additional information on. We can have those by that council meeting. Are you also asking to have my report of recommendations on that meeting date?
I want to get back to the original, the, the original 10 items. No, I don't think we've put a deadline on, on any of those.
We will have a response to all 10 items.
I'm not, yes, I'm not saying that this thing should be done. I'm saying some sort of update and acknowledgement of progress with the opportunity for us to truly respond to what you presented tonight. We really haven't had enough time to take this in. Tonight was a good night to receive it.
And Dave has been tasked with preparing that response to the 10 items. Dave, you want to speak to that status?
There's a draft circulating internally. It's complete. So the council will get a lot to chew on. Looking forward to that discussion.
Thank you.
But where we are on my recommendations is still going to take some time. For example, one of the things I was hoping to do was get on this council, May council agenda, a, a contract for council to approve for an independent third-party code enforcement person in there to, to review policies, to review practices, and make findings to the city manager on best practices. Anthony, I've been going back and forth looking at this contract and, and the RFP that was for it. We want to make sure we're comparing apples and apples. And I'm not sure I'll be able to present that for council approval on May now because we're not quite sure we have everything we need at this point. But that will be one of the recommendations that come out of this. I just don't know if that's going to be on the May agenda, that contract. Also, if we do approve that contract, they will likely have additional findings beyond these that, so the, the recommendations and the findings are going to be continuing to come forward. I'm going to be plugging the city clerk into the code enforcement office also for stuff on public records and official records. More findings and recommendations will be coming out of that. So the recommendations document now I'm seeing is, I can give you, when I give it to you, I'll give you everything that I see that will address everything you're aware of at this time. But more stuff is still going to come. And we're going to have to address that then, too. So this is going to be a many-month thing.
Thank you. And that's, we're on the, the same page on that. Counsel, are we okay with the BSNA? Can we take consensus? Is there any concern? It, I've heard that staff is working on that. Do I have some sort of update?
I, I don't have.
On where that is?
I don't.
Can you take this over? Can you take, get your hands around what it takes to add a user into BSNA? Because I've been asking for, for months now.
And I've tried to get access as well.
It's very hard to get access.
I will work with staff, including the city attorney, to see what concerns, if any, there are and get a response to soon.
By the end of the week, access obtained or a clear reason why we are not obtained would be my only deadline. All the findings and stuff, but BSNA is crucial. And I don't like that I haven't been acknowledged and given a response. I don't like that.
Well, this has been.
Because I'm very patient.
This was very clear by the council. This was my priority, and this is what I have been focusing on.
On January 24th, there were 10 items. That was the first priority. This came, this is a piece of those. I'm not losing sight of the original 10. So this is a user access, BSNA. I think we all got our gifts and software and some wrote programs and architect. I don't think it's difficult.
I don't know if it is or not.
I don't think it is. And I think our IT person is, it's a matter of installing it on the council computer in, in ours. And I, I think if it is difficult, why are we paying all that money to them? It's, that one's important to me. Because a lot of this just doesn't make sense. So I'm working through it. It's been a while. Any final comments, counsel?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am. Went over, so.
I, I would just, would like to say, you know, these things that PEG has brought up and, and as much money and time and effort she's put into our business. You know, we say we're a business-friendly community. We have to get these things right. And I think a lot of balls were dropped, things were missing. But also, you know, there's been a lot of talk lately about how council disrespects staff. And I, I don't, I, to me, it's not a matter of disrespect. We have to ask questions. We have to ask for things that we need. And to me, like you were saying about the BSNA, it takes a long time to get people, staff, to respond. And we're only asking so we can make informed decisions and get the right information. An example, you know, at our last meeting, Mr. Palmer was talking about the flow chart for his department. And I did not get that. And I asked if we could get it. That was at the last meeting. I haven't gotten anything. And then the other thing was, we had asked for a report on open cases of code violations. I never got that. So it's things like that that really frustrate us as a council, me. Because then when we have people like PEG or, or the people of Fillmore come to us and say, you know, why can't we get information? We can't get the information. So, and, you know, I want to be a cheerleader for the staff in the city. I love this city. I love everything about it. But when it's hard for me to get the right answers to let other people know, the residents, and also for me to make a proper decision on a, on something, anything, it's, it's very frustrating. So I just think that, you know, we talk about respect. We're elected by the people because they put their trust in us up here. So we need some respect, too, to get the right answers to different things and the right papers and, you know, codes or whatever. But that's what I just wanted to say. And I thank the staff, they do a great job. But, you know, we're up here in front of the residents and we have to have answers. So, so we depend on the staff for the right information. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
I agree with Councilmember Kellum. And I know that in the past, you have mentioned that maybe we need to look at priorities of what we're doing and put all hands on deck to fix these things. Some of those nice-to-have projects need to go on a back burner until we can find, figure out how we can take care of improving our processes internally for the things that matter and focus on our basics that, so that we do them really well for all of our citizens before we jump into all of these other projects we have going. Because we need to be there for our citizens, make sure that we're doing a great job. They shouldn't feel, all of this has been very informational tonight. We've gotten the information out. But if it comes down to our citizens not feeling like they can come to the city and get their needs met when they pay for all of us in here, now, very little for us, but we've got to do something about that. And these are people that live here. This is their home. And as we look at all of these wonderful, big, huge projects, that's great. But you know what? If you're not doing the small, basic projects well and handling your customer service the way that you should or where people feel good about that, then we may need to put brakes on, just hold off a little bit, regroup, see what we can improve, and then move forward.
Thank you. Any final comments?
Well, I'd just like to say that, to your point about the BSNA, I would like to have total access to be able to run whatever I needed so I could answer questions on my own. But to Brian Palmer, I did go to him and ask for training on BSNA for code enforcement. And he was very willing to help me with it. And I was able to learn quite a bit. But I'm sure there's much more that I could learn. So, but I appreciate that effort. But yes, we need to see to it. And I'm sure that the city manager will get these things correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
No, I was going to say, I have faith in the city manager and the staff, so I think it will all get resolved.
Thank you. With that, city manager, attorney, last word. Anything needed to be stated?
Yes, sir.
Do we have, I think, consensus on those two items? I'm happy to do a formal vote if we want that, but.
The, the two items, one being
BSNA access.
A response by the end of the week on BSNA access.
Ideally, to have access by the end of the week. Tomorrow, you have access. It's on your computer. That's, I'd like to, I, I really needed it before this meeting so that I could, I don't want to keep going back and forth on stuff that, that should be in the people's hands. We are the people. Really important to me.
I, I, I know we spoke about this, and you keep looking at me. I don't, I can't give access to BSNA. All I have is the ability to, to reduce what users can look at or see. I can't add, I can't add access to BSNA. So that's out of my hands.
You can't add a user.
I, I can, I don't even know if I can add a user. I can manipulate the user's access within the, the, the program itself. In other words, I can say, yes, you can look at this, or yes, you can adjust this. I can't actively give anybody access. That's why I sent it to the individuals that can give that access.
Who is that?
I sent it upstairs to IT.
Who's IT?
Um, Mike, I don't.
And Mike Schaefer is the administrator, access level?
I don't know who is. I sent it up to IT so they could just, they could figure it out.
We'll figure this out.
And John.
John, you, all the, I think that's really going to be good. Thank you, Brian. You do always communicate and get answers back. And on this one, it, I think I've been patient. And I think the council, last time I brought it up to emphasize, this isn't just Wes being needy over here, right? This is the whole council wants this. And.
Mr. Mayor, normally with things of this nature, it is whether we have the licenses for us to be added. If, if we don't have those, it may be something we want to take a look at, getting a consensus right now, that we want to allow city manager to move forward with ensuring we do have the licensing for us. And if not, move forward to get that.
I have confirmed, I believe Brian did help provide that we have like 130, we essentially have unlimited users. We own the software. We didn't do their software as a surface cloud computing. We have it on the, on the hard drives.
Then we should be good.
Yeah.
And thank you because you offered to help me as well and sent me information, too. So I want to make sure and state that.
Yes, thank you all. With that, meeting adjourned.